Today is Tuesday, December thirteenth. Are we good?
We're good.
Nope, nope. Okay.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Hello, hello, hello. Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Today is Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the special, and the governing body of all other special assessment districts and tasking districts for which said boards or acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. First of all, this is my last regular meeting for the Board of Supervisors. I will be, end of my term will be after the, right after the first of the year. But I would like to welcome our newest supervisor, Supervisor Dean Wilson, who has been duly elected and has been sworn in, and he is our newest supervisor, so I would like to welcome him. And we are going to take roll.
Supervisor Howard. Supervisor Starkey.
I am here.
Supervisor Short.
Here.
Supervisor Wilson.
Here.
Chair Hemmingson.
Here. Now, if you'll all please take a moment of reflection. Thank you. And now if you'll all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Introduction of new employees.
Yes, Chair.
Hello, Renell.
Good morning, Board. We have six new employees to introduce today, so I am going to invite the managers, we'll start with Behavioral Health, to do quick introductions for you.
Cool, thank you.
Good morning. Cheyenne Hogan, Program Manager for Behavioral Health. I'm interviewing Riad. She is joining us as a Behavioral Health Specialist in our office.
Hi, how are you all?
Good, welcome.
I'm Riad Beard. I'm from Texas. Moved up here because my brother lives here, has lived here most of his life. And I've got two master's degrees, one in Counseling and Human Development and the other is in Criminal Justice. And I'm excited to go to work for the county.
Great, we're excited to have you.
Nice to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Good morning, Board. I'm Crystal Nelson, Program Manager for Child Welfare Social Services. I'm introducing Jennifer Matthews as a social worker for, with the department. We're happy to have her on board and back in the community.
Hi, yeah, I'm Jennifer. I'm from here originally, moved away for about fourteen years and just on my way back, so looking forward to being back.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Good morning. I'm Dorothy Wadlow from Public Assistance Employment Training Branch. And I have the remaining four, I have the honor to introduce these four individuals that recently joined our team. I have Sarah Simpson. Sarah is an Eligibility Specialist. She moved to Crescent City from Palm Springs. She's worked five years with the State of California, working under the California Correctional Health Department. And prior to that, she was working for Riverside County in the Mental Health Branch for four years. My other individuals is Stacy Dowell, Eligibility Specialist.
Hi, I'm Stacy. I've lived in Crescent City since two thousand and fourteen, previously working as an RN for the past sixteen years in the state of Oregon, and I'm happy to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome.
Stephanie Hogan, our Office Assistant.
Hi, I'm Stephanie, and I've been working on my law degree for the past five years, so I'm working towards that, and I've been here my entire life, and I'm excited to be here. Thank you.
Good, welcome.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thanks.
Enrique Ortega, our Fraud Investigator.
Yes, that's great.
Hello, as most of you know me, I used to work at the Sheriff's Office. I was there for about sixteen years, and now I'm over at DHHS as their Welfare Fraud Investigator.
Good to see you. Thanks.
Big loss to the Sheriff's Office, for sure.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm very happy to introduce Gunner Parker. He's new to the area. He's our facility, newer, our newest facilities maintenance worker. He's bring, brought a really positive attitude and just wants to work hard, so we're going to work him hard.
Good deal.
Hello, Board. Thanks for having me. Sorry, I'm disheveled, but I do appreciate the opportunity to work here, so thank you very much.
He's already got you working.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Glad to have you. Any, any other new employees? We're good? County Council, any actions from closed session?
Nothing today, Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come into the attention subsequent to the attention of the county, subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting. Are there any such items? Seeing none, we will move on. We've got a couple of minutes here, so I'm going to take up the budget, budget items. We have budget item eleven dash zero four for thirty-two thousand dollars for miscellaneous revenue and expenditure budget unit to the building inspection to allow for the purchase of a new vehicle. Budget transfer eleven dash zero five in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred within the victim witness budget to cover overages. And twelve dash zero one in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy dollars within the jail budget unit. Twelve dash zero two in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars within the capital improvement budgets to address the costs associated with Agriculture, Weights and Measures Department relocation. Item number twelve dash zero three in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars within the LPS conservatorship budget to purchase new cubicles. And twelve dash zero five in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars within the capital improvement projects budget unit for Phase Two of the Agricultural, Agriculture, Weights and Measures Office relocation. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair, a move, we approve.
Okay, a motion?
I will second.
I have a second. Any public comment?
Chair.
Yes.
I, we rearranged the schedule a little bit today out of the ordinary, so public comment was scheduled for ten oh five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if you want to still complete the budget transfer vote and then move on, but I just wanted to remind you.
No, let's hold off on that. I apologize for that. I, I missed that part. Okay, well, let's open it up for public comment.
Linda Sutter. First off, I didn't see Sue in here, but I want to thank her for the service that she gave this county while we waited for a new supervisor. And Jerry, I want to thank you for your service, for all the years of service. I mean, thanks is an ignore. Kylie to give to you. You can toast your retirement later, and.
I have to be careful with gifts, you know.
Well. You know, this is our last day, so I don't think you have to worry about it.
You don't think I'll get recalled or anything?
No, not this time. But anyway, thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Vince Tomasic. That's T-O-M-I-C-I-C-H. I'm a resident on South Bank Road. Been there, be twenty-three years, the end of this month. And I'm here to talk about vacation rentals again. I've been gone for a while, and I haven't seen much. We had talked several, I think about a month or two ago, about an ad hoc committee about doing something about vacation rentals in our county. And I'm just going to ask, has there been anything done with that since it was discussed at a meeting or two, several meetings ago? Has anything been done, or is it still hanging out there?
I, I believe CDD is still looking into it.
Oh, okay, fine. I'm glad to know that, then. I do have a lot of information with regards to that. You know, zoning on South Bank Road is still residential agriculture, and that's what it's zoned, for residential and agriculture. And we've got now basically illegal hotels coming in. You can call them vacation rentals if you'd like, but they're basically hotels. And there is a definition for a hotel. That's a business that operates as a community activity which provides lodging to guests that is not used or is not intended to be used as a primary residence. That's what these are being used for. And, you know, things happen. You might not think there's any problems, but there still is problems out there. There's a lot of people that work for a living, and they can't make it to meetings and come in and tell you folks. But there are still problems out there. I had a fellow, probably two weeks ago, he was walking down my driveway on his cellphone, talking away. I go, and he walked over, he's looking in my drift boat. I go, excuse me? And, you know, he was from the vacation rental. He says, oh, I'm just walking around, just trying to look at the country. I said, well, you're on my property, please leave. And he was very nice, and I was nice too, but this is what happens, you know? Come down your driveway at ten o'clock at night looking for the vacation rental. Inconveniences. Never used to happen before. Happens all the time now. Anyway, I'm glad that you guys are looking into this, into some regulations, because I do really believe that something needs to be done, and in an orderly fashion. I've got lists and lists of places in Northern California that have altogether banned them or put some good restrictions on these facilities, because they are commercial facilities. You can say what you want, but a lot of money's being made on vacation rentals in this county.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
And congratulations, Jerry, on your retirement.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. What does that mean?
I'm very happy to see you.
And we're happy to see you. So I am Susan Doherty, and I am the current Director of Sir Optimist International in Crescent City, here with our current President, Janine Gallatiato. I'm here today in my role as the Committee Chair for our Stop Trafficking Committee. I'm really pleased to be able to tell you that we are going to be holding a sex trafficking awareness training for the first time since two thousand and sixteen. It will be January twelfth of next year, run from eight-thirty in the morning till three in the afternoon at the Oak Valley Ranchery as Sam Lopez Community Center. We have Katrina Taylor, who is a trafficking survivor, coming up from Humboldt County, to do the training. It is the day spent learning how to become more aware of sex trafficking in our community, how you can help those who are compromised by trafficking. Designed to help assist in prevention, identification assistance of victims, teaching you about the red flags that are out there, the profiles of the trafficker, trafficker targets, and the resources for trafficking victims. I have brought with me flyers. This is just a sixty-dollar cost. It includes lunch that day, and we are asking for your support. We're asking for your attendance. We're asking for your active encouragement for community members and employees to attend. I'll turn it over to Janine.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm here for the big ask. And the big ask is that the Board of Supervisors and county administration highly encourage our department heads, especially our Criminal Justice Department heads, the sheriff, the district attorney, the probation officer, and their, and Health and Human Services, and their depart, and their managers, to attend this training. It's very low cost, it's in county, they don't have to leave the county for it, and I think it'll be, it'll benefit all of them. There's many employees who attended six years ago, but you have a lot of new employees since then. So we are asking you, for you, to encourage them, and we will provide them, also we'll be sending out flyers to them. And I just want to say congratulations to Jerry, and thank you for your service.
Right back at you.
I still have my bus.
There you go.
And congratulations, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Okay, consider yourself encouraged. All department heads.
Paul, Little Juvenile Justice, I wasn't aware that they were going to do this presentation. My presentation is very short. Strongly support this, so hope you do too.
Thanks.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Doug Wakefield, and I'm just here to thank you, Jerry, for sixteen years of your wisdom, your considerable experience and, and abilities, the humility, all the things that make you the best supervisor that I've ever known. So appreciate that, and congratulations.
Thank you, Doc, appreciate that.
I think humility might have been pushing the envelope there, Doc.
And we're all sitting right here, Doc, but that's cool.
You're all awesome. My name's Dave Powell. I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. I've got three things I want to talk about. First, last month was our Foster Adopt Month, and I had talked to you before about that my son was adopting a little guy. And we finalized that adoption the Monday before Thanksgiving, which is very appropriate. And Darren McKelfish, our good friend, was able to oversee that, and it was great, and I appreciate the emphasis. Second, and I stopped in to talk with Alyssa on the way in Northrop, about the situation that we have here where out of all of, out of California, there are two counties that do not do electronic recordings, and we are one of those, and she said that she is well underway with moving forward on that. So I applaud you all and your efforts, and her as well. That's going to be significant, especially for the real estate community, but for our community in general. And then the third thing is, let's see, oh, yeah, vacation rentals. Sorry. And I do want to say they are not commercial endeavors, they are just places for people to stay, and, and we bring hundreds of people to the community. I shouldn't say we bring them, but we make it easier for them to come and to be a part, to enjoy our beautiful community. We get reports back of how much people love our community, and it's just wonderful, and it's a great facility. It's, it's, it is a money-making endeavor, but it is for the county as well, and so it's a good thing. And a fourth thing, congratulations, Jerry. Good luck with you, and congratulations, Dean. And Joey, if you ever get up there, congratulations to you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'd like to start by expressing my greatest respect when I say it's good to have our old sheriff back in town. Congratulations to Mr. Wilson, and our community is fortunate to have you representing us. Thank you. I'd also like to thank the numerous county employees that have answered my questions and provided a lot of documents and, you know, the IT's been, IT department has been really good about responding and getting these meetings going, and they should be commended. And Kylie, thank you for dealing with my grievances. I'm sure it's not easy, I'm sorry, as well. But, and Chairman, thank you for your years of service. You know, we definitely have a great community here. You're outstandingly hardworking, and you've got some great careers to show for it. I don't agree with your policy, but, so I'll move on, and I think today's meeting is going to illustrate how poorly really things have gotten, but I'd like to just comment on the suspected criminal murderer, Mr. Hughes, Gabriel Joseph Hughes, who's been in and out of jail here locally, killed one person, from what I understand, I'm not in law, I don't know. But this is what's happening in our community. Transients, homeless, can't let our kids out going to the store. I've seen this gentleman in my neighborhood. Look around. Is it better?
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, so you know the public comment, then we're going to close the public comment period, and I would like to introduce to you who I think is a great asset for all the counties that he represents, Mr. Patrick Blacklock, who is the CEO and President of Rural County Representatives of California, which I am the county's delegate, and he has been just a super addition to that organization. I can't express how much I appreciate his, his efforts and what he's doing for RCRC. He's just been just a great addition, anyway. Patrick, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I do have a presentation I'm going to run through that talks a little bit about RCRC and our affiliate organizations, but I'm hopeful that you'll throw questions at me along the way or provide feedback along the way, as I was expressing to the Chair and Supervisor Howard earlier this morning. The value is really hearing from you during these so that we can carry that back, or I can carry that back to the organization, and we can stay aligned with the issues that you're facing on the ground. So please don't hesitate to stop and ask me questions anywhere along the way. But I do want to dive right in and start with an overview of our strategic plan, and I want to thank Supervisor Hemmingson, who served on our executive committee, and really they took the laboring ore in preparing this strategic plan and approving it last year. And hopefully you'll see some themes that speak to you and resonate with you. Broadband, creating more housing capacity, water resiliency, forest health. These are the types of policy issues that permeate the strategic plan, and while this slide gives you an overview of them, there are actionable strategies that follow, and our executive committee and our board check in on that on a regular basis. But I also want to draw your attention to the right-hand side, where we describe the vision for RCR, which is to not only be the premier advocate for rural counties, but also an innovative service provider. And it's that latter part that I'll speak to a little bit later when we get to our affiliate organizations. But it is advocacy that really is the cornerstone of RCRC. And RCRC, as we sit here today, is made up of forty rural counties, and we advocate on an array of issues that are pretty specific to, and I think their board has unified around those. And again, I don't think any of these are a surprise to you, that forest health, wildfire, water, drought, housing capacity are there, and, and top of mind, I also And top of mind, I also want to draw your attention to the last poll at the California Public Utilities Commission, because this is an area where we've really tried to focus some time and energy. As you may know, it's a pretty Byzantine agency and difficult to navigate on the best of days. And so, we've really tried to become specialized there. And why it's important is because utilities, broadband, wildfire, these are the topics that they are addressing on a daily basis. And so, we've been, I think, quite successful in developing those relationships and beginning. And you'll see some of the fruit of that labor when we get into the broadband discussion. On the right are the three ad hoc committees that our board formed over the last year, and that really gives you a sense of the issues that they prioritize. And really, these ad hoc committees sought to do a deep dive on those topics, and then update our policy principles that could then inform our advocates in working with the legislature on a daily basis. With that, I'm going to move into our affiliate entities. And I want to start with Golden State Finance Authority. GSFA, as we know it, is a joint powers agency made up of those same 40 counties. And really, GSFA seeks to help people thrive in rural communities in a number of ways. One is homeownership. GSFA provides down payment assistance to those seeking to buy homes in your counties. But a second is in an area where there's been a lot of interest lately as broadband access. And GSFA really led the way to get our broadband program going, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then, on the right on this slide, you'll see a new program that the GSFA board launched over the last year. It's called Assist to Own, and it's meant to help county employees purchase homes. Because one of the things the board was hearing is the increasing vacancy rate amongst our member counties. Some counties going 20%, 30% plus in terms of their vacancy rate. And as a former county administrator, I can tell you that when it got to 8% or 9%, I used to get nervous about what's wrong. And to hear these sort of numbers is a bit alarming. And so, the GSFA board sought to do what they could to help by providing some funding towards homeownership for county employees. And you can see there the counties that have taken advantage of that. Golden State Connect Authority is one of our newest entities. This is also a joint powers agency, again, made up of those same 40 counties. And it is really wholly focused on deploying broadband. And there are three phases of work. One was to make sure that each of our member counties has a broadband strategic plan, and I'll talk about that in a second. The second is provide technical assistance. So, for those counties who are ready to do broadband projects, we have technical experts already under contract to help accelerate those efforts. But the third was to actually deploy broadband in areas where private providers are either unwilling or unable to do so, and to use a municipal open access model. And so, think of that like an airport, where the public agency comes in and constructs the airport, but then private airlines come in and use the airport. The same model is what we're talking about here, where GSCA will deploy fiber and own the fiber, but then make it available for private internet service providers to provide service to the home over it. And this slide gives you a sense of where we are with the initial tranche of funding that came from SB 156. And SB 156 was a significant amount of state and federal money that got allocated out through the CPUC for broadband deployment. And the first tranche of funding is called the Local Agency Technical Assistance Grant Program. There was 50 million available, 45 for local jurisdictions. I think you have something on your agenda today, and consent, if I saw correctly, to partner with GSCA on that. And basically, it made available 500,000 for each local agency to do work around broadband. And so, what GSCA has done, recognizing that particularly for our smaller counties, they don't have the staff resources to go out, one, after the grant, and two, administer the grant. So, GSCA is seeking to do that for them, and we've done it in two ways. One is we've partnered with Utopia Fiber out of Utah. Utopia is like a joint powers agency, Utah's form of it. And they're the largest open access provider of internet services in the nation. And so, by partnering with them, our goal was to take advantage of their expertise. And this is an area that we're not tremendously familiar with, so we're contracting with them and using their expertise. Secondly, we have a contract with Tilson Engineering to do actual engineering. So, with those monies, the goal is to do actual engineering for areas in your community that aren't being, that are either unserved or underserved, and to get that engineering completed. The next tranche of funding that will come from the CPUC is the big tranche of funding, and that's for actual construction and deployment. So, by getting this engineering done, Del Norte and other counties will be well positioned to pull down what's called the FFA monies to do actual deployment of fiber. And that may, you may seek to have GSCA do it. You could partner with a local provider. There's an array of options for how that can be done. Our goal in all of this was to make sure that our rural communities were at the front of the line to pull those funds down. And you can see on this slide, it says 37 million, but actually, I think they're up to about 42 of the available 45 million have already been applied for. And over half of those are our rural communities. So, we were successful in getting in front of the line, and I'm thankful for that, because as you look now, who's coming, those latest applications are coming from cities throughout the state, particularly in urban areas. And so, that, that fund's going to quickly be oversubscribed. Unfortunately, I think we have all but one of our 39 counties now have been able to get their applications in and pull those monies down. So, we're in good, in a good position in terms of the broadband funding that is on the horizon. I mentioned getting broadband strategic plans in place for all of our member counties. This slide gives you a sense of that. You're ahead of the game. I think Cal Poly Humboldt has been, and Connie Stewart there, have been tremendously active in this space. So, if that's a good thing for you, but not all of our member counties have the luxury of having that assistance. And so, we were successful in getting about a $4 million project, the majority funded through the federal government through an Economic Development Administration grant to fund the remaining counties. So, that work's going to be happening simultaneously with those later grants that I mentioned. And we applied for that quite some time ago, but it, the feds didn't move quite as quickly as we would like. But nonetheless, they have, so the money's there now. And it's, I would describe it as we're now flying two airplanes while we build them. Exciting. And we're lucky to be in that position and be able to do that, but it's not quite as linear as we might have hoped. But nonetheless, the resources is there, and I'm convinced we're going to do good work with them. One other initiative I wanted to mention is zero emission vehicles. There is a tremendous amount of federal funding coming, in particular, for zero emission vehicles. You may know that in California, 16% of vehicles sold last month were electric vehicles, and that number's been increasing month over month. A concern here is that with all of that money coming, and with that ever-increasing market share, we don't want to see, again, our rural communities left behind. And so, we're trying to figure out how to reach up and pull some of that money down and get it to rural communities, so it just doesn't all fly to the rural areas. And so, we have a ZEV initiative. The first step is to get all of our counties into compliance with existing state statute around permit streamlining for electric vehicle infrastructure. Kudos to Del Norte. You're, you're in the green on that, but we have some counties we're helping get there. A second is to do readiness planning. We know that, and that consists of two phases. And the first is the grid. We know for several of our counties that the grid is probably not ready for the coming wave of electric vehicles. So, step one is to assess the readiness of the grid and develop actionable strategies around that. Then step two is to figure out, okay, where does EV infrastructure need to go within that county? If you've got a garage attached to your house, it's probably a pretty easy thing to solve. But if you live in an apartment complex or multifamily housing, it's much more challenging. And as that percentage of new vehicles that are EV goes up, that means the secondary market or used car market is going to be increasingly EV. And that means those living in multifamily housing are going to have a smaller available share to purchase from if they don't have EV infrastructure. And so, when you think about it in context of economic development or workforce housing, workforce development, we want to, again, make sure that those monies are being pulled down to invest in rural communities for that infrastructure. So, they, we would, we're seeking funding to do readiness plans for our communities. And then last is to partner with private entities to do actual EV deployment for those areas that come out of the readiness plans. Our next entity is a nonprofit. This was formed many years ago by our board, Rural Alliance, and it sat relatively dormant until recently. But our board has said, we need to re-initiate it. And the reason for that is recognition, I think, that the legislature is comprised primarily of individuals from urban communities, and they do not have the familiarity that we would like them to have with rural community interests and needs. And so, when they're legislating, it is an uphill battle often for us in terms of familiarizing them with how, what the impacts are going to be in rural communities. So, Rural Alliance seeks to end that in two ways, or seeks to address that in two ways. One is through educational tours for legislators and regulators. And secondly, through targeted academic research on topics of key interest. And so, probably those policy issues that you saw earlier in the strategic plan, partnering with academic organizations to do research around that that can help support advocacy and educational efforts going forward. And I'm happy to say that effort is moving forward full steam ahead. In fact, they've received some additional funding, so I'm optimistic that that's going to be a sustaining effort going forward. Two more, I promise, and I'll, I'll be finished. I'm trying to, yeah, I know you've got a long agenda, so I'm working through it here. Another nonprofit is Golden State Natural Resources. This is another relatively new one that's been formed, and it's been formed as a forest resiliency company. And it was formed out of recognition that we have a number of forest health projects that simply aren't happening because there's nowhere to take the biomass, for example. And we know that the Forest Service tells us that they have projects they put out to bid that aren't getting bid on because they don't pencil out, and they primarily don't pencil out, again, because of that low market, low-value biomass, there's nowhere to take it. So, GSNR's been studying that problem, and they've come up with a solution that we're now quite a ways down the road in terms of potential implementation. And that is to take that biomass, convert it to industrial pellet stock at two initial plants. And then, when it's in that form, ship it by railcar to a port in the Bay Area, and then ship it overseas as a replacement for coal and energy production. And we know that in the UK and European markets, for example, there is strong, high demand for these pellets as a replacement for coal, and as Japan is in a similar position. So, we know the market's there. Now, it's a sort of putting logistical steps together. And I say we've reached a pivotal place now, because just last month, we began SEQA, the environmental analysis for this project. So, it consists of the two sites, the port, and the in-force projects to bring the biomass in. Again, it's not, GSNR is set to be a forest resilience and company. Our goal is to see these forest health projects happen. The industrial pellet stock happens to be a way to help incent those projects and accelerate them. So, the next six months are going to be very exciting for GSNR to go through that environmental analysis, and also, at the same time, hopefully, pull together the funding streams needed to keep this project moving forward. And then our last affiliate entity, I promise, is Environmental Services Joint Powers Agency. This is a joint powers agency made up of 26 rural counties, primarily small counties. And it's really meant to be a venue to help them navigate the increasingly challenging world of waste management regulation and implementation of those regulations. And it's, I say a venue because it gives those 26 counties sort of an amplified voice in working with CalRecycle, because they're all there at one time. Secondly, we provide technical support for them, not only with implementing those regulations, but also in working with and advocating with the regulatory agencies, particularly CalRecycle. So, that, in a nutshell, is RCRC and our affiliate entities. But I'm hopeful that you may have some questions or any comments you want me to carry back to the team. And I do want to thank Supervisor Hemmingson again for your years of service, but, thank you for hiring me, and also for being on our executive committee and putting together the strategic plan. Thank you.
Questions from board members?
Well, Patrick, thank you for being here today. I think a lot of what you discussed today, in particular, specific to the RCRC lobby, and getting down into the weeds of what rural means, rural capacity. And with the JPAs that have been formed specifically under RCRC to address those rural capacity needs, RCRC is really focused in on true getting-it-done approaches. And I, I could really appreciate what is being done, especially on the forest resiliency piece. This pellet move is critical to reduce biomass in our forest and find a productive way to grow it economically. I'm super happy that's in place and moving forward. The Environmental Joint Powers Authority, essentially around 1383, has been critical for small rural to find these ways that we can process this mandate under state for green waste processing. Critical that the authority helped in those processes, and really happy that the board, in this case of RCRC, really felt it important to put these JPAs in place. Thank you for that, and thank you for stepping up.
Thank you, Supervisor. I appreciate that. One of the things our board will be evaluating in next year is whether to add a strategy to our strategic plan specifically focused on the smaller counties and helping them go after grants in particular. I've heard one small county put it this way, I need to get a grant to get a grant, because I don't have the staff time and resources to go apply for these. And as more and more money's coming through that route from state and federal programs, we want to make sure rural communities don't get left behind. So, if we can achieve economies of scale through one of the affiliate entities to pull those monies down, that's sort of entrepreneurial approach that makes RCRC a lot of fun for us that are, our hearts are with rural counties.
Not to give you kudos ahead of CSAC, because, you know, you guys have taken big steps to get there in those capacity building efforts. CSAC actually did their first associated with grants this year. It's really helping around that need, but if you could do it on RCRC too, I'd encourage it.
Yeah, we, CSAC and RCRC try to be very complimentary, and it's been, I think, together, there's a, again, economy of the scale, or there's a multiplier effect when we're working in a complimentary way. So, I think that's a good thing that we're working that way with CSAC.
Dean, any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Derek? Yeah. Patrick, just a few things. And I think, you know, Chris brings up that relationship between CSAC and RCRC wasn't, when I first got, was first on the board, it wasn't that, I guess there, there wasn't that relationship that I think that we're building now. And I think that has a lot to do with you and Graham actually knowing each other and getting together. And I think that what a, these two agencies can, or entities can complement each other so well, that I think working together is certainly a big solution. I'm glad that you brought up the Rural Alliance Incorporated, because I've been on RCRC for six years and didn't know that we had that, a little affiliation with that group. So, looking forward to seeing where that goes. Very appreciative of that. And then, just hearing about the grants process that we're getting into now, I think, is going to be really advantageous for our, our community and our county. And I, I just want to say that, that RCRC is such a great asset to rural counties that, that I think is, is so much underutilized for, by our departments. And, and we're getting more and more into that. As you can see, you know, we're in the green in most of these things that are coming up. And, and it's because of, of that relationship that, that we're building, and we're getting better at it, so that we can get ahead of the game and we can, we can get involved with these things. So, appreciate you coming up and visiting our community and giving us a presentation. And I will take any comments from the public.
Sam Straight, Del Norte County. I see RCR is, RCRC is focused on environmental issues, but I was wondering if they also had time in their schedule to consider the fact that both Department of Corrections and several statewide newspapers have announced that six correctional facilities in California will be deactivated in the next year. Two further correctional facilities will be closed. One of the deactivated correctional facilities is going to be Pelican Bay. And I was wondering if that was anywhere on their radar. Thank you.
Yeah, Patrick, since you're here, I'm going to let you speak to it. But, yeah, we've been heavily involved with Lassen County's struggles, and go ahead.
The short answer is yes. It tends to be on a county-specific basis up until now, but I'm happy to have our, our advocacy team talk to Neil or your county administrator, and, and we can have some follow-up discussion around that to explore the nuances here.
Yep.
The only thing I could say is, when I was with the State Sheriff's Association, we had the rural sheriffs, and, and I would greatly encourage expanding as much as we can CSAC and RCRC's connection, because I can tell you, you know, when we were lobbying down in Sacramento, it made a world of difference to have LASO standing right next to me saying, you know, our biggest concern coming into the budget was rural sheriff's money. And it made a world of difference, because they're speaking right to their senators and their congressmen, who have a lot more pull, unfortunately, than, than what the rural sheriff sometimes had to draw from, so.
Supervisor Wilson, you're exactly right. We talk about the partnerships with our urban colleagues as being important for that exact reason, that sometimes you need to go in hand-in-hand, and it does have a greater impact. Because if you were to look at our map, and then look at the map of the legislature, it's the inverse. The majority of the legislators are coming from non-RRC counties, so the partnerships like what you describe are vital.
Absolutely critical, yeah.
Chair, if I could just, so we can get ahead of the rumor mill, is that it's just one yard at Pelican Bay is scheduled to be closed in spring of 2023, not of all of Pelican Bay. I just thought we should probably put that out there to make sure that we don't, yeah, as we've been told that, Sam.
Thanks, thanks again, Patrick. Appreciate it. Safe travels. Any other public comment?
Thank you, board. Sorry to be critical, but it just seems like it's a convoluted mess. I'm not sure how you hired him and how much he's being hired for. I think, Chris, you're probably taking over for, for the appointment, but, I mean, we're, we're directing money towards utility companies who already have a monopoly in the market? I mean, we're, how are we making competition? You're just driving inflation. We have government and capitalism and nonprofit, all in one. It just does not look, it's, and I understand that banding together and sharing resources helps communities, especially rural communities. But, you know, we got a half a million dollars, I think, to spread broadband here locally. But who's that going to go to? It's going to go to Charter. Charter is going to get it, and they're going to make money on it. There's not going to be any competition. So, I don't know, I was just wondering if you could provide any tangible outcomes that Del Norte may have seen from being associated with the development? Delano may have seen from being associated with the development.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know that we can go into, to all of that right now, but thanks for the comment. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, we're going to move on. We have a 10:30 timed item, so we're going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and re-cavine as the Board of Equalization and conduct an appearance, not timely confirmed hearing per the Delano County Board of Equalization Local Rules. And that party is not here. I take it Kylie, do you know?
I don't believe Mr. Proctor is here. If Mr. Proctor is here, could you please stand? I don't believe he is present.
Okay, so therefore the assessment stands?
The assessor's value is upheld, correct?
The assessor's value is upheld and we will move on to the next public hearing. We don't have to do, go through any motion or anything, Joel, is that right?
It's automatic.
Automatic, okay, thank you. We're going to conduct a public hearing for an application for change of assessment, APN number 127-260-0433, Gail Tarbell, and I did see her come in. So do we have the assessor's office coming in? Do they need to get sworn in?
Yes, Chair, one moment. Can I get you to raise your right hand and state your name?
Karina Timmer.
Do you solemnly swear, state under penalty of perjury, that the evidence that you shall give in this issue or matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, board. My name is Karina Timmer. I'm a property appraiser with the assessor's office, and we are here today to hear application appeal 2021-006. It's an assessment appeal of the regular tax rule for the 2021-22 year. The property in question is located at 134 Azalea Drive in Klamath. It's approximately .17 acres, zoned R1 residential. It's developed with a single-family home that was built in 2005. The home is 1,540 square feet, has three bedrooms, two bathrooms, plus an attached 418 square foot garage. The condition appears average from the street when we conducted a visit, but we were not allowed to go onto the property to view the home further. The neighborhood that it's located in is on a loop road just off Highway 101 in Klamath. The highest and best use of the parcel is as it's currently used, is residential, and the approach we use to value it is the market. The following pages in the packet you have just show a street view that's older of the home, just to get a better idea of what it looks like, and then the satellite image as well of the neighborhood. So the applicant is challenging her enrolled value for the 2021 tax year. The value in question is $250,000. That's based on a January 1st, 2021 appeal, or I'm sorry appraisal. The applicant's opinion of the value for that date is $135,000. In 2021, the subject property was enrolled in the Prop 8 program. Prop 8 is a voter-approved initiative that allows temporary reductions in the assessed value of a property, and a reduction is allowed whenever the current market value of that property is less than its factored base year. And the factored base year is defined as the market value at the last change in ownership, then adjusted annually by a rate of not more than 2%. It's often referred to as Prop 13 value. The Prop 13 and the current market values are then compared each January 1st, and the lower of the two of them is enrolled for the upcoming tax year. In this case, the Prop 13 or factored base year value for the property in 2021 was $284,677, and the Prop 8 current market value was determined and enrolled at $250,000. Part of the applicant's objection to her 2021 property value was a 120% increase from the year prior. And while California property tax law prohibits those base year Prop 13 values from going up more than 2% each year, it's not the case for properties in decline in value status, so those Prop 8 properties. Those will be assessed each year based on market value regardless of the magnitude of the change from year to year. If the market value rises above the Prop 13 factored base, then that base year value is restored. For this assessment, the comparative sales approach was used to determine the current market value for the property, and Property Tax Rule 4 says that whenever there are reliable market data available respect to a given real property, the preferred method of valuation is by reference to the sales prices. As shown on the following pages in the packet, there were relatively few sales of newer homes in Klamath that occurred around the January 1st, 2021 valuation date. So I also considered a sale that occurred in the Birch Track neighborhood in Crescent City because we are required to allocate a separate value between the land and improvements of any given property. That allows us to compare structures that are alike, but maybe different areas of the county. So I'll just briefly discuss what comparable sales I used for the appraisal, and I have included a chart on the last page of the packet so you can easily compare the three that I've chosen. The first is comparable number one. It's located at 109 Maple Road. It sold for $265,070 on July 15th, 2020. It's located in the Klamath Glen area. It's on .76 acres. It's zoned, single-family residential. The only structure is a 1,576 square foot residence in average condition, built in 2003. From the total sale price, the structure was allocated $195,070, and the land is determined to be superior to the subject due to size, but it was allocated 70,000. So based on this comparable, it suggests an improvement value of approximately 195,000 and a land value that's somewhere lower than 70,000. The second comparable is located at 2460 Alpa Street. It sold for $260,000 on November 27th of 2020. It's located in the Birch Track neighborhood in Crescent City. It's on .15 acres, zoned, single-family residential. There's a 1,410 square foot home in average condition, built in 2005. It has a 484 square foot attached garage, and from the total sale price, the structure was allocated 200,000, the land was allocated 60,000. And again, although it's not located in Klamath, this sale does help establish a value range for a home built in the early 2000s on an average-sized lot. So it suggests an improvement value of 200,000, and the land value it suggests is not that comparable. The third sale that I used is located at 128 Azalea Drive. It sold for 168,000 on February 27th of 2020. It's two houses down from the subject property, and it's .18 acres, zoned, single-family residential. There's 1,368 square foot home in average condition, built in 1965. The home has a small shed but no garage, and from the total sale price, the structures were allocated 118,000, the land was allocated 50,000. I wanted to make sure to note that this sale occurred in early 2020, and that's just before the housing market really started to rise. And again, our valuation date is January 1st of 2021, so if anything, this sale would be on the lower end of the value range indicated. The home is inferior due to age, size, and lack of garage, but the land is highly comparable. So it suggests that land should be allocated 50, and the improvement should be valued somewhere higher than 118,000. So considering those three comparables, the best indicators of value are $200,000 to the improvements or structures, and that's based mostly on comparable one and two. And $50,000 should be allocated to land based on that third comparable that was two homes down from the subject. So the assessor's office believes that the 2021 enrolled value of 250,000 is the fair market value of the property for the 2021 lien date, and we ask that it be upheld by the board.
Thank you. Questions from board members?
I just, I'm trying to find it. What is the lot size? Oh, it's a, I'm, just as soon as I asked it, it's .17 acres.
.17 for the subject property, yes.
So explain to me, again, I apologize, you went through that pretty quickly. Explain to me why the rate went up again so quickly in the?
Sure, so this property has been on that Prop 8 program for several years prior. In 2020, that, compared to 2021, it went up over 100% in value. And so we feel that today's value in question, the 2021 value, is 250,000. It was a hand appraisal that we've looked into, that's what this packet is based on, and that is an accurate number for the 2021 year.
And is that because it was no longer subject to Proposition 13? Is that what you were saying?
That's right, yep. It's been appraised at the, what should be the current market value every January 1st for the past several years. There's multiple reasons why that 2020 value was, in my opinion, a bit lower than it maybe should have been had it been at the actual market value the year prior to this appraisal, and that's to do with we were slightly behind in our work. So we didn't have current comparables to pull from. We were working from older years, and as the market was going up, we are looking at older things still. So it kind of depressed the value more than possib, more, more than it possibly should have.
Questions, board members? Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Gail? You'll need to get sworn in there.
Can I get you to raise your right hand and state your name?
Gail Tarbell.
Do you solemnly state, under penalty of perjury, that the evidence that you shall give in this issue or matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Hi. Thanks for this time to share this information and ask for a look at this. I was just shocked last year when I received the letter and my property taxes. I get this, you know, every year, the value of my property. So in 20, August 27th, 2020, it stated that the, the estimated market value was 1,000, no, 113,718. So the following year, it over-doubled to 250,000, and so my talks, taxes also went up over 100%. I was kind of shocked. I mean, I knew the markets in California were raising because I've studied real estate in the college courses. I, I kind of follow that. I'm always looking at real estate. And I saw that the state issued an article that statewide properties went up about 23%, and it's quite a jump. But to get your property tax up over 100% is kind of, kind of shocking, like why? You know, so I, I did some research and I did get a copy of the addresses that they compared it to and, and, you know, in my study of, when you do a comparable market analysis, you use the same, similar property, and some of these, you know, they're just not comparable at all. Okay, so there was maybe few to go on. There was one down the street that had three bedrooms and two baths, and I don't know why that one wasn't used, but then there was one used up here in Crescent City. And I've learned you always have to use the same community because like Klamath, I've been shocked since I moved here in 2005, that real estate is just like in the toilet in Klamath. It was lower than anywhere else that I would look at, and, and then people don't want to go over last chance, you know, so people aren't, you know, flocking to Klamath unless they have a job there maybe, or they have family. So, you know, it's, to compare it to something in Birch Track isn't quite equivalent. And so I know the properties have really skyrocketed from inflation, from the fires, from everything that's going on, and COVID has really driven up, has really just screwed everything up. So anyway, I tried to look on the Board of Equalization's website for the language of Prop 8. I mean, everybody knows about Prop 13, but then all of a sudden, I mean, I even called the, the county office when my property tax went really low and I didn't understand why, and then they explained. But there's some language in Prop 8 under Section 51 that, under 51D, it says, "In no event shall the percentage increase for any assessment year determined pursuant to sub-paragraph A, B, or C exceed 2% of the previous prior year's value." So I don't know, she did tell me that it can jump up to 50% if the market goes up 50%, but I don't, I don't know where that language is in the actual bill in Prop 8 legislation. And if it's in there, I didn't download the whole thing, but I just, you know, and then this year, they added another 400 to my taxes, so it's like, wow, I don't even know where that came from. So for me, I'm almost 70 years old, for me to pay $253 a month for property taxes just seems like, wow, I've got to reconsider. Maybe I need to go live in a trailer somewhere. I don't know, it's just, I just need to have you guys look at it.
So do you have some comparables to give us?
Well, there was another house in Klamath which I was surprised it wasn't compared to. It's the same exact model of my house because Fred Stockard built this home in the town site, and it's the same exact house, though it is on the reservation, so maybe that's why they didn't assess it. It, and I had it here. It was like 151,000, so maybe it's not, that was off Zillow. But like I said, the house that, I'd have to get the address. It's down the street from me. It's the Proudies Old House, and it's sold, and like I said, I don't know why that one wasn't included in the assessment because it's closer to my size of house instead of the one at 128. This is like a total rat-infested dump. I don't have it here, I don't know where I put it. I, it's at, it's 141 Silver Side. And then the other address is, gosh, I could provide it to you, I just, I don't know. Anyway, I just, for the property to tack, to jump up over 100%, it just seems unreasonable to me.
Yeah, that's, that's, could be quite a shocker, I could, I could see that.
Here it is. So this, this is the same identical house, a 181 Silver Side Circle in Klamath, same house plan. It's 1, 153,575.
And you're getting that off of Zillow? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
Could you give that to the clerk and she, we'll give it back to you.
I mean, it, just, I don't know how accurate Zillow is.
I know, I know, I agree. It's, it kind of pulls information from other sources, so you don't know if it's.
Yeah, that's, that's a little tough. Tough to do. Any questions from board members?
I, I don't have any questions, but I, I want to just keep bringing, going back to this prop, the decline in value status under Prop 8. Was that explained to you, why, why they were able to have this increase? Was that? Why, why they were able to have this increase? Was that it's based on your particular property falls under that category? So was that explained to you?
I was explained how Prop eight kind of works along with Prop 13, though in this language, I went to the board last night and I, you know, the website to, to look, read the actual language in the, in the law in Section 51. And then I read that, "In no event shall the percentage increase for any assessment year determined to exceed 2% of the previous year's value." And it's like, I, you know, where, is it in the language that it can increase 50% or more? 100, over 100%? I don't know.
That is a question. Yeah, that is a good question. I'd like to answer.
So I don't have all the codes in front of me right now, but I do know that 51D that you pulled, that is in regards to the basier value, which again is that Prop 13 value. So say you bought your property for $100,000 way back when, it can never increase year over year more than 2%.
25%.
So that's what that code's referring to. And again, Prop eight is when that slowly increasing value rises above what the market is worth, then we're going to stick you on Prop eight, but it could go up 1,000% year over year, whatever the market's doing, as long as it's not over your Prop 13 value.
This one's under Prop eight. I'll have to recheck.
Yeah, we just pulled it up on the phone, but I don't have any handout or anything to give you guys right at the moment. I apologize.
Okay.
So it just seems that Prop eight totally wipes out Prop 13 and the whole nature of it. I, I don't know.
I kind of think that's what happens.
Yeah. So thank you for hearing my...
Sure.
...situation.
Okay, board?
I can make a motion that we, if we need to do that, that we uphold the change in assessment as determined by the assessor's office.
Okay. I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay. Thank you all. Okay, we're going to move on to, let's see, we're going to adjourn as the Board of Equalization, reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and we're going to get to hear from Assemblymember Wood. I assume he's online?
Yes, he is on via Zoom.
Okay. Assemblymember Wood, are you around?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. How are you today?
Good, good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you again for the invitation. I've done this, I think, every year. I've been in the legislature. As always, I'd like to make my comments, well, rather brief, considering, considering I'm a politician, but then give you an opportunity to ask me any questions you might have. So I'm going to start with a quick overview of the state budget. The state budget approved for '22, '23 is $303 billion. It actually represents a 2% decrease over the '21, '22 budget. It added about $37 billion in budgetary reserves, and 93% of the discretionary surplus will be used for one-time purposes. Following two years dominated by COVID-19, the first half of 2022 brought global inflation, spurred by lingering supply chain disruption and Russia's war in Ukraine. It's expected that the 2023 tax revenue, revenues will be down, producing the state budget next year, which will be much more challenging than, than we've seen in, in recent years. Here are some of the allocations that I've been personally involved with that will affect all five counties in our Assembly District. $20 million to support regional forest and fire capacity programs, which is a program created by one of my bills last year. The North Coast Resource Partnership will be one of the organizations that will benefit from that. There's also $5 million to support prescribed fire training, and $800 million for wildfire and forest resilience, including $300 million from the Gold, Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund for preparedness programs, delivering on a promise I secured four years ago. In Trinity, for example, Trinity County, the Watershed Research and Training Center will benefit from that particular funding. Locally, throughout the district, so this is district-wide, we were able to get $5 million for Santa Rosa Caritas Center to support transitional housing, $1.5 million for the city of Santa Rosa Water Efficiency Programs, $2.2 million for restoring Bauer Park in Mendocino County, $500,000 for public radio equipment upgrades in Humboldt Radio Station, KHSU. Wildfires will continue to be a challenge. I continue to work on multiple fronts to find ways to protect, prevent, and plan better by making budgetary requests as well as finding ways to decrease our risk. This year, I had a bill to improve the quality of construction materials used to build non-residential critical infrastructure in high fire severity zones. Broadband access remains a problem, a challenge, especially in rural areas like ours. I serve on the state's Middle Mile Advisory Committee along with Senator McGuire, and that's a project that will help to build out a 10,000-mile middle mile network, total of about $7.2 billion. I also authored a bill to require broadband companies to provide the California Public Utilities Commission with household-level mapping data, which forces them to become more transparent about where they offer service, but more importantly, where they don't. Providers have often resisted building out new broadband in less populated as well as low-income neighborhoods because it doesn't provide sufficient profit. It's always profitable, but it's, and how quick is their return on investment, and that becomes a challenge. So the Middle Mile project will improve this, making it easier for, and yet, yes, cheaper for, for them to extend service to these areas. So I'll be watching to make sure they're actually building it out and connecting with California as they have until the end of 2026 to complete this project. In 2021, Providence, Humboldt County initiated a Better Birthing Project with local tribes to build relationships and increase trust between St. Joseph Hospital in Eureka and native, native communities, the native communities it serves, to improve the birthing experience, to honor a tribal and cultural tradition of waiting 10 days before naming a child, which makes it more difficult for both families and hospitals to comply with a 10-day filing requirement with the state. We introduced a bill to expand the timeline to 21 days. Sometimes it's just as simple as that. It was passed unanimously by the, by the legislature and signed by the governor. This was my seventh year chairing the Assembly Health Committee. I continue to focus on improving access to affordable, high-quality health care. It's not been easy, I passed significant legislation, but at the same time, come up against the huge and influential, what I call, the industrial health care complex. I'm proud of the work that we have, that resulted in the Office of Healthcare Affordability. After three years of work, working with the administration, it's become a reality this year through the budget process. This new office will allow the state to analyze the health care market for cost drivers and trends in order to develop data-informed policies and enforceable cost targets. We're trying to bend the increase in the cost of health care on a year-to-year basis. It puts the state in a much better position to actually control and contain health care costs. I also authored a bill with the chair of our Judiciary Committee to improve the system that addresses patients with mental health issues. The due process rights of these patients were inconsistently applied throughout the state, and this bill clarifies those rights with the long-term goal of better and more timely services and care. Some companies of unionized employees were weaponizing health care coverage during strikes by threatening to discontinue coverage of the employee and the families. Most notably, this was actually attempted by a couple of health care companies, one of which was Stanford. The bill permits striking workers and their families to access affordable covers to cover California if the strike is prolonged and they lose coverage because of it. Last but not least, we must, can't forget our local breweries. It was brought to our attention that some breweries could not deliver to restaurants they might own within a few miles of where they actually brew beer without going through a middleman. So we solved this by permitting them to self-distribute to restaurants they own within a five-mile radius of where they're manufactured. Some bills from the past are being implemented, including the new 365-day fishing license, also allowing, a bill allowing nurse practitioners to practice within the scope of their practice without the oversight of, of a physician, and new flexibility for recycling centers. Some issues I continue to review for possible legislation around mergers and consolidation in the health care industry, continued work in broadband expansion and regulation, nursing home operations, how these facilities use related companies to increase their profits. And there's an author in, columnist in Humboldt County, I'd like to give a shout-out to Linda Stansberry for her deep dive into, into this work. We're also looking at how to address seismic requirements for hospitals. A longstanding issue for hospitals in rural districts where the cost of upgrades is out of the, out of the reach financially. There are at least five hospitals in our Assembly District that fall into this category. Also remaining closely involved with PG&E capacity issues, particularly in Humboldt County. I recognize that you have a different power, power provider through most of, most of the county there, but we're, we're having challenges with PG&E and as far as transmission and interconnection with the projects. Also, pretty exciting, potentially could, in the long run, even extend up into the Delmar County area is offshore wind. There were auctions last week, two projects off of the coast of Humboldt County, one winning bids. There is the potential that in the next couple of decades, if that wind, those wind farms could actually extend up into the Delmar County area. Huge project for Humboldt, obviously, by extension for the region as far as reliable power, green power, and significant job opportunities for, for folks. So in closing, and not in closing my comments, but I would, I'm always happy to take comments and questions from you all. I just want to say, wish you all peaceful, happy holidays, and a shout-out to you, Chair Hemmingson. It's been an honor working with you all these years. I wish you, I wish you the best as you retire from the board. This is the last time I'll address you as a, as you were the member, as the chair of the board, so it's been an honor working with you.
Yeah, thank you, Assemblymember. I appreciate that, and I can say the same right back at you. It's been a pleasure working with you closely. You've been a great advocate for Delmar County. All the things that you've done to help us are greatly appreciated. And I'm going to pass it along to the board for comments and questions first. Supervisor Starkey, nothing? Chris?
No, not a question.
Dean?
No, just looking, looking forward to the, the fire mitigation fund being, being able to come up and be utilized up in this area because it's, it's critical.
Yeah. Assemblymember, again, thank you so much. I appreciate, you know, all the health and medical issues that we've had and forest things, as well as solid waste stuff. I really appreciate it. I'm going to open it up for public comment, so you can hear any public comment about your presentation. So hang in there for just a second. Public comment? Anyone?
Thank you, Assemblymember Woods. Couple points. You mentioned the industrial health care. Just wondering how we're battling insurance fraud and the rising cost of medicine when we're becoming more efficient as a society, and things should become easier and cheaper. Also about the broadband and why we're subsidizing utilities, and if you think that maybe we're adding to the inflation by granting all this money?
Thank you.
I'm happy to, happy to comment on both. First of all, I'd say it's a huge challenge of fighting large health care entities, whether they're insurance companies, drug companies, whatever. It is, it is a, unfortunately, a battle-by-battle approach. The creation of the Office of Healthcare Affordability, I believe, will be a significant step forward. We'll be able to actually analyze real-time data, come up with actual targets, and, and also for, for expenditures. And that, that, we believe, based on experiences in other states, will begin to level off the, the rising cost of health care, including pharmaceuticals. The state is also embarking on manufacturing of some key pharmaceuticals. The first one the state will manufacture through its own operations will be insulin, which continues to be a challenge for a lot of people. And then over time, we will begin to manufacture other, other, other more common, very commonly-used medications, give people access to medications at a much, much lower cost. With regard to broadband, the, a lot of the money that came from the broad, actually, the, the vast majority of the money is from the federal government. We're looking at broadband, in my mind, more as utility, as a must-have, not as a, as a luxury item these days. So the idea of building a, a middle mile network that would be owned by the state, that would allow other private companies or internet service providers locally, could be a municipality as well, an opportunity to tap into the, into that open, open access broadband, will be a game changer for education, health care, and businesses alike. So that isn't state so much as it is federal, and we're thankful for the opportunity to be able to take that and, and build out. The second Assembly District is the most underserved Assembly District in the state. So I'll take money from where we can get it, and, and hopefully be able to provide high-quality service for everyone.
Thanks, Assemblymember. We've got one more comment for you, and then I have another board member.
Hi, Linda Sitter. So I hope I misheard you that you made a statement, physician assistants and nurse practitioners will no longer need oversight by a doctor. That's a little concerning to me because if there's misdiagnosis, then who, who's liable for that? I know from my own experience that my nurse practitioner, she overlooks some things, and I have to bring them to her attention for certain tests. And so most people don't have that knowledge to do that. And so when you're having people rely on a, a nurse practitioner, not a doctor, I think that's not good common sense there. Thank you.
Well, appreciate your, appreciate your perspective on that. This is done in 24 other states, and these are not, these are nurse practitioners who have experience, training, who have been under oversight. You don't just become a nurse practitioner and go out and practice medicine independently. It is not for everyone. It would, there would, there would be a rigorous process to get to this point. So it is not likely that you will see every nurse practitioner providing care in this way. There's always the potential everywhere for treatment to not go exactly as people expect, whether it's a nurse practitioner or a physician. None of us know, I don't know any perfect health care providers out there. And this does just apply to nurse practitioners. It doesn't apply to medical assistants.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard has one more comment.
Yeah, real quick, Assemblyman. I just wanted to know if you're aware of any spot bills currently in the Assembly, or any of the Assemblymen considering issues that would support or any actions by our insurance commissioner to help address the high fire insurance rates that we're seeing in... in rural California. It's been obviously a challenge the last several years. We've, Del Norte in particular has escaped many of these, these issues, but we still are faced with extremely high rates here. We're, we're not alone in many of our rural areas, so I'm wondering if there's any, any push in the Assembly to help the Insurance Commissioner address some of these challenges of high insurance rates?
Well, there's, there's continued, there is continued push. I'm not aware of any bills. We just began last week, our new session, so the bulk of bills introduced in any, for the next upcoming session won't happen until January and February. But, and you are right, I think while your insurance rates in Del Norte County are definitely high and higher than they have been, you haven't experienced the, what a lot of people in other areas have experienced, which has been widespread cancellation of policies. And so this is an ongoing battle. Insurance companies are not always our friends, quick to connect, obviously, they're seemingly quick to collect the premium and not so quick to pay out when it's, when it's necessary. Also, I'm a big believer in if you are doing things around your home, protect your home, that your policy should reflect that. That is also an ongoing battle. Insurance companies don't want to do that as well, but the work continues. It is now a statewide issue. It's been, was an issue for us in Mendocino, Sonoma, and parts of Humboldt County before, but, but now that it's a statewide issue, I think you're going to see more and more legislators involved in this and my hope is that we'll see, we'll see real progress going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or Assembly Member? Again, thank you, Assembly Member. Appreciate all your support for Del Norte County.
My pleasure, my pleasure. Thank you too, thanks to everyone, appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to an 1115 timed item, which is to conduct a public hearing to uphold the Planning Commission's approval of a coastal development permit for new residents and add conditions 26 and 27 regarding nesting birds and use of long chemicals as requested by the county planner. Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. If it's okay with you Chair, I do have just kind of a quick overview of the project as well as one housekeeping item.
Absolutely.
Cool, okay. So first, the housekeeping item. The Board Report does have one error in it that I noticed earlier this morning. Appeal item number 15 contains language for the Class III categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act. It's a quotation from, I believe, Public Resources Code Section 15, 303. It's incorrectly quoted. The subsection specifically has a number one in front of it that should be listed as subsection A and it is referenced in that, the discussion section as section A, so that's what that's referring to. So just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
So overview of the project. Connie Evans has submitted an application to develop the parcel located on Lakeside Loop in Del Norte County. The house itself is proposed to be 30 feet tall with a footprint of approximately 2,395 square feet. So this, this application itself kind of delves into some more of the nuanced issues in land use planning, such as regulatory takings and a number of other items. So specifically, it had several issues, including the proximity to wetlands associated with the Lake Earl Wildlife Area and the designation of the Sitka Spruce Forest on the parcel is environmentally sensitive habitat area, also known as ESHA. ESHA is protected under the Del Norte County Certified Local Coastal Program, which states that environmentally sensitive habitat areas shall be protected against any significant disruption of habitat values and only uses dependent on such resources shall be allowed within the areas. Residential development is not generally considered a resource-dependent use. However, the applicant had every expectation to develop the parcel since her family created the subdivision and denial of the permits on the property would likely result in a regulatory taking of private property under the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution. So in order to recommend approval to the Planning Commission, staff had to answer several questions associated with this, this permit. The first being, is the project the least environmentally, or least environmentally damaging alternative that still allows for some reasonable expected use and economically beneficial use of the parcel? The answer that we came up with was yes. Given the limitations of the parcel, there's extremely limited space to even place the house on the parcel in the first place. There's a required 100-foot setback from the wetlands associated with the Lake Earl Wildlife Area. And just to put it in perspective, a total of four of the trees are proposed to be removed. And the applicant did, when designing the project, take into account, you know, all of this in their project design. Second question, what scale of development can be expected for the parcel since it is designated as ESHA and that it would be based on the surrounding neighborhood and is the project reasonable in scale? The answer we came up with, again, is yes. The proposed house is almost exactly the average footprint of development in the surrounding area and that's based off of an analysis that we prepared of 45 houses in the area. I pulled building permits for all 45 houses and used assessor's data as well to come up with that. Additionally, the development itself would have the sixth lowest lot coverage of all houses included in the analysis. And then finally, third question, does Ms. Evans have a reasonable expectation to develop the parcel? Again, the answer is yes. The McNamara family, of whom Ms. Evans is a direct descendant, first purchased the parcel in the late, in the 1960s and subsequently divided it for residential development in the late 1980s. Given the family's investment into the area, it was determined the applicant does have reasonable investment back to expectation to develop the parcel. So on October 17th, 2022, an appeal was filed to, with the Board of Supervisors for 18 separate reasons, which was included in the Board Report. So staff generally disagreed with most of the assertions made in the appeal. As such, we've submitted a Board Report essentially rebutting all 18 of those points. Staff is recommending that the Board uphold the decision of the Planning Commission while adding two conditions to the project. The first condition add, or addresses the need for nesting birds, or a nesting bird survey as part of development, and it was actually intended to be added at the Planning Commission meeting. I completely forgot to add it, so that's my bad. The second is a result of the appeal and adds a condition to further protect water quality and vegetation associated with the Lake Earl Wildlife Area. So that's it for the overview. I know that both the appellant and the applicant are here today, either physically or via Zoom, so I'll leave it to you Chair on how to proceed. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions you or anybody else has about the application. So, thank you.
Any questions from Board Members? Nothing? Nothing? Nope, we're all good. In that case, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to uphold the Planning Commission's approval of a coastal development permit for new residents, the 368, that makes the, and conditions 26 and 27 regarding nesting birds and use of long chemicals.
Okay.
Chair. I will second that, but we do have public comment.
Yeah, yeah, I saw it. Okay. Okay, public comment?
My name is Janelle Covalt and I'm a Board Member of Friends of Del Norte. We want to thank you for hearing our appeal. We appreciate your detailed response to our concerns in the Board Report. We want to thank you for adding condition 26 regarding the bird nests and condition 27, limiting the use of pesticides and herbicides. The Friends of Del Norte have been actively protecting wildlife of Lake Earl and Talawa for almost 40 years. Even though I've only lived here for four years, my family and I started visiting here and vacationing here in the 80s. We immediately loved Lake Earl area and the Talawaddune State Park because it reminded of us of Alaska. We commercial fished and had a fish camp in Alaska for 20 years. And as in Bristol Bay, the birding around Lake Earl and Talawa is amazing, almost 320 species. We've enjoyed launching our rowboat paddleboards, I won't go into, we have our scopes, we go out in Lakeview Drive, Cadre Point, the Narrows. And we feel like more and more people value these wild areas and are moving here to recreate here, even duck hunters. Duck hunting areas in the Central Valley are crowded, making hunting here more appealing. And in your Board Report, you minimize the conflicts between homeowners and duck hunters, but we foresee more complaints if you add eight more houses and people to the mix. Now, we understand that you have the development of one lot, number nine, here before you and I'm going to quote you, "You cannot consider the impacts of proposals that do not exist." However, there are references in the staff report to other lots, as in quote, "The five lots in question" on page three. Biological assessments, and I believe the wetland tests were conducted on lots other than number nine. And that is one of the main reasons that we're here before you, or I'm here before you. You're asking us to ignore the references to the four additional Evans lots and ignore the fact that there are eight undeveloped lots in the subdivision, which are shoreline, which are all designated ESHA and part of adjacent, a part of and adjacent to a larger spruce wetland forest where there are nesting birds and valuable wildlife habitat. We worry that by approving the development of this one lot, you are setting the precedent to develop the others. It's not like these lots are just 10% environmentally sensitive habitat area, they are more like 90% ESHA. There is no building spot on Mrs. Evans, Ms. Evans' five lots that is not ESHA. The local coastal plan recommends parks, trails, agricultural use for this type of land. And we don't know, maybe Ms. Evans is proposing a park on her other lots. That would be amazing and we would be all for that. But we also know from the public records and public notices that, you know, she's creating a new business called McNamara Meadows for another property, that her family, you know, is in the development business, so we're assuming that she isn't planning on creating a nature park on her other four lots. So, you know, we're concerned. Four trees cut down and one septic tank on Lake Earl Shoreline, we can understand that. But if you're saying, you know, 30 trees, five to eight septic tanks, this is a problem. This property is adjacent to a larger spruce wetland forest where there are nesting birds and valuable wildlife habitat. Once again, we ask that you table this proposal until the larger issue of the impact of developing the adjacent lots is addressed. The original subdivision was created over 40 years ago and times have changed. People value wild places and wildlife and these eight lots, including number nine, are part of a larger mature spruce forest that is used as a wildlife corridor for elk, deer, bear, cougar, fox, and a variety of bird species. Friends of Del Norte asks that you keep this forest corridor intact and we thank you for hearing our appeal.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Those lots have been for sale for a long time and there's homeless camps over there, so anyone that's coming in to develop the property and take care of the surrounding properties is okay by me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Kind of anything?
I do have one online, Chair.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Connie Evans and the last speaker made some assumptions about me and she's been in the area four years. I grew up on the property that she's talking about. I rode my horse on that property with my best friend. This is a part of my world, my heart, I'm not going to give it up to be destroyed. And I would like to show you all of the information we gathered in relation to the Friends of Del Norte over the years. My mother kept these binders and they are representing $90,000 worth of money I've had to spend, my family's had to spend, to develop these lots. We're looking at their principal permitted use. The trees themselves have English ivy on them, they are being destroyed by nature itself. We are looking to protect the environment and again, they did address that counter thing she mentioned. To the last lady who spoke, yes, we've called out the sheriff about the homeless people. We have worked very hard to protect the environment and we do want to be more proactive, we do want to protect it more. So although Friends of Del Norte claim that they are trying to protect this land, they don't do anything about it. This was a resource available for them to purchase. They didn't do that. They purchased land for the Jack McNamara Airport Field Expansion down at Pacific Shores, but they didn't buy this. And frankly, I wouldn't sell to them at this point because they don't deserve it. So all of this is within the regulations. I am just trying to use a principal permitted use on this lot and I've had to spend, again, several thousand dollars because of Friends of Del Norte. We've lost sales because of them. And my mom passed away last week and she was hoping that this land would sell and it would be like some kind of legacy, something she gave to her children. And these people, again, are just causing havoc and they don't even know what they're talking about. And that's all I would like to say today.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I don't have any online.
Thank you.
Brandon Bieber speaking again, Friends of Del Norte. Interesting what's in the title, I guess, huh? Or if they're friends and, they're good people, but they have stopped some progress around here, which we greatly need. You know, 199 is a good example. So, yeah, please let the permit stand.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Janet Gilbert. This is just listening to these people. I don't, I don't think people understand the biological connectivity that exists. We have climate change because of our progress, that we're destroying functional ecosystems, we're destroying the ability for the planet to continue to support us because we're invading too much space, taking out functional ecological systems. So what the Friends of Del Norte are trying to do is set aside special systems for, into perpetuity, so that everyone can enjoy it and the birds can live there. We are losing wildlife at an incredible rate and you don't seem to realize the connectivity that we have as human beings on this planet as well. So this land should still be making a profit for these owners if they would sell it and maybe the Coastal Commission or a conservation company with monies would come in and the people could still go out and hunt the ducks and enjoy the land and the birds could still thrive and the land itself could be sustainable in promoting tourist industry in this county and more money could be coming in rather than dividing it up into parcels, especially with septic systems that you don't even know if you are contributing your sewage into the lagoon at this point. You don't have the data on that at all, but the land was subdivided years below, before any kind of environmental protection agencies existed, 60, 1960s. So you need to see this as a long-term decision that you're going to make, not as you're denying her some wealth at this point in her life. Certainly, if the land is sold, there will be wealth for her and there will still be sustainability for the system and there'll still be ducks for the duck hunters and elk for the elk hunters. You can't keep separating all those out from each other. It is all connected. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I just wanted to say Connie has her hand raised again online. I just wanted to let her know Connie, you had your three minutes and you cannot speak again. I just didn't want you to think that you were being ignored.
Okay, any other public comment here? Okay. I'm going to close the public comment then and bring it back to the Board. Chris?
Yeah, I know I have a motion on the table, but I just, I wanted to reflect back and I'm super happy you were able to find a home here in Del Norte County. You know, you've lived here for four years. Friends of Del Norte, as mentioned, has been extremely active in this community, but this county is facing a crisis, a crisis of availability of homes, a crisis of availability of workers. And as you're probably aware, having moved here to enjoy the resources that you've expressed here on the dais, those resources we've settled aside for the entire state of California, the nation and the world, at a factor of close to 80%. So what we do have left to develop that was approved under our coastal planning documents and that the- and that these people have the expectation to develop sometime in their lifetime, we hope to be able to, under the existing environmental rules and laws, do just that. And I think our planning staff has come with some reasonable expectations to protect those ESHA resources and achieve your goals as a Friends of Del Norte, but in addition, allow us to achieve some of our goals, which is to provide for the needs of folks in our community. So I hope you can appreciate the decision and why I made my motion today. Thank you.
Anybody got anything else?
The only thing I can say is, is it's very consistent with what already exists in that area. Those parcels have been long approved and we shouldn't come in at this point in time and deny that development in that area to continue as well as what we currently have. This is not a new acquisition. This is not attempting to take lands from that area. It's just utilization of what is already existing there. And it's very consistent with all the other homes in that area and all those that are along that, that Lake Earl area.
Kylie, would you please poll the vote? This is a motion to uphold the planning commission's approval.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay. And we're going to quickly go to item number 35, which is an 1125 timed item, which is an overview of the Point St. George Management Area Trail and Parking Lot Project. This is something that I've been working on for quite a while with Heidi and others with Fish and Wildlife. And so I wanted, before I leave and I'm no longer here, I just wanted to give an introduction on what we've been working on and the direction that we're wanting to go. So Heidi, I'm going to let you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Actually, I kind of have taken a step back, a little bit further back in the history because I know we have new supervisors on our board. Some may be aware of this just from having been involved accounting government. But what we're here to talk about today is the Point St. George property, which, here we go. So we have three different, actually four different property owners. The County of Del Norte, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, private property, that was the former Coast Guard barracks, and then the California Department of Parks and Recreation. The Point St. George area is home of the ancestors of the Talawa people, which is one of the earliest human occupied areas along the northwestern California coast and an area of significant meaning to the local tribes. The land is replete with native plants and wildlife, including a substantial number of rare species, as well as an array of coastal wetlands. It is a popular location for bird watching, fishing, camp clamming, beachcombing, walking, hiking, and nature study. In 2002, the County of Del Norte acquired the 339 acres of, let me keep it there, 339 acres of privately owned land from a willing seller through financial assistance provided by the Wildlife Conservation Board, State Coastal Conservancy, and the California Department of Parks and Recreation. The purpose of the acquisition was to resolve resource protection and public access issues. In 2003, one of the first efforts was to prepare the Point St. George Management Plan. And as part of that, it was a very extensive effort. There was a team of consultants who worked with this list of all the different partners in our community who have interest in this area. The plan involved four different parts, with the most important part being the final, which was the implementation. What are we going to do now that we have this plan? And so I've summarized in this slide some of those items, beginning with the protection of natural resources through the designation of public trails, habitat restoration, the interpretation of natural resources, which would include informational handouts, the protection of cultural resources, which could include the protection of sites in place, and possibly the construction of a caretaker facility, the interpretation of cultural resources by reserving land for a future cultural resources interpretive center. And lastly, public access, to maintain public access to, to and along the shoreline in order to have continued access for visitors and local folks. Moving on to the next. The next step that we had was in 2010. We did the first phase, which included the activities listed. We did some improvements at the Garst Beach parking lot. We placed a couple of gates at several of the turnouts. We completed conceptual plans for the main parking lot and for restrooms, installed protective guardrails, and most importantly, we prepared an environmental study, a CEQA document, for the parking lot and the trail. And following, I'm going to show you a few of the maps that were taken from those studies. It's really hard to see, but this particular map shows where the location of the trail would be. It begins at the, I guess, the western part of the parking lot where the gate goes down to the ocean. And then it would loop south and then, excuse me, that would be north, and then headed back south where it would end at the Garst Beach parking area. As I mentioned, the area is very rich in sensitive plants and wildlife. This map, the colored areas, show areas that have been identified as areas with sensitive plants. This one, this map is also a little bit hard to see, but it shows the wetland areas. So we know that to some extent, there would be certain wetlands that would be impacted as part of the development of this project, which would need to be mitigated. The last element is the parking lot. And this is kind of what brings us back to today because the parking lot has been an issue within the last year, year and a half of local concern. And we've all really tried to find solutions to it. This is the preliminary design that was prepared by the county back in 2012 to our 2010. Now that we know more about the issues in the parking lot, we are looking at revising that based on input that we've had from stakeholders. So let's see here. So this kind of gets to where we are today. We have convened a stakeholder group that includes the California State Park staff, State Coastal Conservancy, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Talawa Dany Nation, Elk Valley Rancheria, and Supervisor Chair Hemmingson, as well as county staff. The next steps, which is kind of where I'm going to conclude, is sort of setting it up for where we go from here because we have not constructed this project, obviously. It is still of a great interest to a number of the stakeholders. So what we've had, several meetings, we know that we have to revise the parking plan and prepare new engineered plans. We need to update some of the studies to reflect current conditions. The CEQA document may need to be updated. We need to obtain permits from a variety of different agencies. And then we need to pursue construction funding through grants from the Wildlife Conservation Board or the state and/or the State Coastal Conservancy. But what my point, purpose today and at Supervisor Hemmingson's request was to kind of give the background on where we've been. And then what we plan to do is return early next year with some ideas as far as where we need to go with regard to this project to get input from the board. There's going to be, you know, it's a very complex project with a lot of different stakeholders. And so it's going to be a very big project whenever we figure out who is going to be taking the lead on it.
Thanks, Heidi. I appreciate it. Any questions for Heidi before she slithers back into her home? Great job. Thank you. Well, she's, I know she's hiding a little bit because she, this is, this is a big project and it's something that, that we've been working on very closely together. And, and we've got a lot of partners in this that, that really have, I want to say, a much bigger stake in it than we do, a bigger financial stake, stake than we do. Although it is going to be a great asset for the community, it will be a project that attracts tourists and tourism through that trail project. And having a facility where they can park their cars and have a restroom and, and not be tearing up the neighbor's property is going to be a huge asset. And we've worked on this, you know, for quite a while. And, you know, things get pushed on Heidi all the time in projects like this. You know, she's reluctant and I have no problem with that just because we have resource issues, staffing issues, and maybe can't handle that all. But we do, we do need to be supportive of this project, I believe. And with the help of WCB, as well as the Coastal Conservancy, the State Parks, and Fish and Wildlife, I think those agencies can push this forward and we can move on. Did I say something out of line? Heidi, are we good with that?
No, that, that's great. And we had a really very positive meeting recently with the grant manager from State Coastal Conservancy. And we're looking at ways to resolve the issues as far as who is going to carry this forward. And so there's a lot of good energy going that direction. And we hope to be able to bring that back.
Erin couldn't make it? I guess she was going to be here.
She's available via Zoom. She's on Zoom.
Oh, she's on Zoom. Erin, I don't know, is there anything you want to add?
No, just good afternoon or good morning. And that we as, so for those of you that don't know me, my name is Erin Gates and I am the Deputy Superintendent for California State Parks for the North Coast Redwoods District. And I am located up here in Del Norte County. And I'm just very excited to see us revitalizing this project that's been in discussion, as Heidi pointed out, for almost 20 years. And I think we are at an exciting precipice where we're seeing that when we come together, we have multiple governmental agencies coming together to support a project that's not only going to benefit the millions of visitors that are coming through our community, but it's also directly going to benefit our community. And just, we're excited to be a part of this conversation. And State Parks will continue to be an active participant in trying to move this forward.
Great, Erin. Thank you so much. Glad that you're in the spot you're in. You're doing a great job. Any comments or questions from anybody on the board?
The only question I have is, is in the long term, if this project does get, if it looks like a beautiful project, if this project does go forward amongst the agencies, who's, who's going to be long-term responsible for the upkeep and maintenance on all these areas?
That's a fantastic question. I'm going to assume that the county will be responsible for the portion that's within the county property.
And that would be?
State parks. That would be everything on the map, everything that would be within the counties. But that's a really good question. I don't know if we've gotten that far. Because it's a really big deal. Because in order to, it's, I mean, we love to do new things, but if we, we need to have the ability to maintain them and know who's going to do it because there's going to be a cost associated with that.
That's, that's the large going forward question for me is, is, you know, I love seeing new projects. It's great, but, but we have to be able to maintain them and keep them and, and provide for them because that's a huge area.
Yeah.
I mean, and a lot of that area was maintained merely through grazing, through cattle management. And as that goes away and, and other responsibilities have to go forward to maintain, especially those, those large areas, and to provide the trail maintenance and everything, that's a, that's a large expenditure and unfortunately, you know, resources are slim.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Yeah. For the most part, we've kind of been maintaining that, you know, to this point, what limited amount we do maintain. But, yeah, the trails and all that's going to be a whole different story. That's going to be an issue of parks, I think. Isn't that mostly on parks land, the trail?
So the majority of the trail project that falls on State Park property, that would be our responsibility to maintain. And we, as this plan was laid out well over a decade ago, California State Parks has a very robust and skilled trails program. So we would be the ones that would actually be building the trail for Del Norte County on their property as well as part of this project. So we've provided cost estimates for not only that portion of the trail in terms of supplies, but also in terms of labor and material that would be needed. We have not determined if State Parks would be managing the trail on Del Norte County property, but that's totally up for discussion. They're going to be maintaining the trail on California State Parks property. That is definitely a likely possibility that it could extend out to Del Norte County.
Great. Thanks, Erin.
And who maintains, or under whose responsibility does that fishing access road that goes from the large gate all the way down to the?
That is the counties.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, any other public comment?
I think that the big elephant in the room has not been addressed, and that is Elias Mavris. I was assaulted by him a couple of years ago out there. He has done nothing but harass people in the parking lot. It's, it's disgusting. And that needs to be put under control. If you're going to be placing people from out of town out there, it's a mess. I don't, I heard he was in jail. I don't know. I haven't followed up on it to check on him. But the, I, I love it out there, but I quit going out there based upon that reason alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes, thank you. Beautiful area. Be great to have a walkway there. And thank you for all the time you've put into this project. I was just, you mentioned partners. If you could expand on who our partners are and, yeah, that'd be, that'd be good.
I think all the partners were listed. We have Fish and Wildlife, State Parks, Coastal Conservancy, WCB, Wildlife Conservation Board.
Yeah, and we have the Talawa Dany Nation, Elk Valley Rancheria. All of those folks were involved in the site visit. Fish and Wildlife, yeah.
Okay. Any other public comment? We're going to take about a five-minute break and we'll be back in session shortly. We're going to take about a five-minute break, and we'll be back in session shortly. Come back to order. And we are going to, we're going to go back to our budget items, which we had a motion and a second for. And I'm going to ask for a public comment.
What number are you on?
On the budget transfers, Linda.
Any public comment on budget transfers?
Oh, yeah.
You were going to say something earlier.
Let me see, it was the, uh, okay. So, number 41, I see that, oh, no, not number 41, I'm sorry.
That's not on the budget.
The OSHA penalty on the jail. Okay, well, I just wanted to let you know that I don't know how that got going. But I received a phone call from a gentleman from disability rights group out of San Francisco who's concerned about our jail up here ever since he discovered that article where there was not very good living conditions, let's just put it that way. And so I imagine that this is probably the tip of the iceberg of what's going to happen, but there's more coming down the line for the county jail. That's all I wanted to let you know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion? Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to go back to the consent agenda, which is pretty full.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Public comment on the consent agenda items? Which there are many.
Sorry for always voicing concerns, but this board has a history of abusing consent agenda items, and today is no different. Sometimes it seems like everything we do is backwards here. Sell and borrow is a good example. It's unfortunate it shut down, and now we might have to shut down Juvenile Hall, too, after there was request to do something and nothing happened again. When you sell a property, the buyer typically does the appraisal. Why are we different? Why is the government different? If we have to pay for a plan for, to sell it to the Fish and Wildlife Service? Or, I'm sorry, it's the United Fire, sorry, another government agency. You want to sell it to another, the fire department. Why, when we have an assessor, don't we come up with a price figure we want and make it, make an offer for it? Why are we doing the work for the Forest Service? It just seems backwards. And then on the contracts, number 15, 16, 17, and 18. Number 15 for $240,000. Number 16 for $20,000. Number 17 for $160,000. 18, number 18 for $75,000. About a half a million dollars in those consent agenda items. All of those have contracts that are over six months old. According to the Del Norte County Contracting and Purchasing Code, 4.3.030, contracts for services. Number two, if the service provided by the independent contractor is in excess of $50,000, a contract must be approved by the Board of Supervisors. No costs shall be incurred by the contractor prior to approval of the contract. How are we letting these contracts expire and not renew them in a timely fashion? You're setting the self, the county up for a great liability. We're going to have another item on the agenda later that was the consent agenda earlier. And now it's...
Thank you.
I know how you like that three minutes. Well, I'll honor that today, sir.
Any other public comment?
Good noon or whatever. Anyway, I'm here as basically the friend of the board. I think there's a lot of confusion out there over this borrow proposal. And it's basically not your fault. I've asked questions about it and found out that you follow, you followed what is right, you did your notices, there's nothing wrong. But I think the reason I'm addressing it, because I'm trying to get it out to the public that, hey, I think you did the right thing. It's unfortunate we have a triplicate that nobody reads. And, and so it's not your fault that we don't have a paper. But the, the basic thing here is that I'm concerned about is the process that goes forward that you're already on target with, and I support all that. But I do have some contacts in the Forest Service, and they just got their budget increased here in the last year by Congress by a third, and they're in the billions, and they got a third more. This is extremely valuable property. I support fire suppression. I think that's a wonderful thing. I'd love to see kids there, without a doubt, you know that. But I support fire suppression, and I think that is a gold mine up there for fire suppression. Right now, because of the budget issues with Forest Service, they're looking for, for housing, they're looking for office space, they're paying some places $30,000 a month in lease. This is a gold mine for us. We can use that money. And the other thing with fire suppression and training, that has a kitchen, that has a dorm, that has classrooms, that has a gym, that's got a rural area that goes with those type of people. This is, this could be a $75,000 lease. It may not be initially, we may have to make a deal because of upgrades, maybe to lease it to them for a lesser amount, and let them use their money to fix it up. But once it's fixed up, we can get, we raise the lease and put it in the original contract. And this is why I'm addressing this issue. I think you've got a great opportunity to settle some of our financial problems. We're fortunate enough, the proposition passed and you didn't lose that money. But this is a gold mine. Federal government will provide. And this is, this is, and I'm saying this for all of Northern California, the feds are looking for office space and, and billeting for their staff. So with that said, and not belaboring the issue, I hope that cleared up some things for people that don't understand. I'd like to see it vetted a little more and give people an opportunity to bring some other options. But that's in your ballpark, and I can't do that because that, that legal status closed. Thank you.
That'll happen. Thanks, Paul. Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment. Kylie, anything? Nothing on the?
I don't have anything online, Chair.
Bring it back to the board. Would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, on to general government. Item number 36 is to approve and authorize the chair to sign the attached resolution to honor retiring Public Health Program Manager II, Melody Cannon Cuts, as requested by the Director of Health and Human Services.
Move to approve. But in a second.
I have a motion and a second. Public comment? Seeing no public comment, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. And Supervisor Starkey has a resolution that she will read.
Thank you, Melody. This is a great honor for me to be able to read this into the record. It's a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, State of California, honoring Melody Cannon Cuts, retiring Public Health Program Manager for the Department of Health and Human Services, Resolution Number 2022049. Whereas Melody Cannon Cuts concluded her official services with the County of Del Norte as Public Health Manager for the Department of Health and Human Services on November 1st, 2022, after service to Del Norte County for over 19 years. And whereas Melody entered county services on September 15th, 2003, as an eligibility worker two with the Department of Health and Human Services, promoted to an integrated caseworker one on November 12th, 2003, and to an integrated caseworker two on October 19th, 2000, 2004. She just ran up the ranks really fast, so I'm going to get through this. Promoted to a social worker one on March 10th, 2005, a social worker two on March 10th, 2006, promoted to an integrated caseworker supervisor on May 3rd, 2006, promoted to a public health manager on July 13th, 2007, and ultimately promoted to the Public Health Program Manager II on July 13th, 2008. And whereas over nearly 19 years, a 19-year career with DHHS, Melody distinguished herself with deep knowledge and abilities related to public health matters. And the expertise and leaderships developed during her career has been invaluable to DHHS during her tenure, and she has excelled in all assignments given to her with the same energy, focus, and drive that she had since day one with the county. Whereas Melody served her final years in full-time service with DHHS as a valued member of the management team, and held great responsibility in managing and responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency at the local level. We were faced with an unprecedented global challenge, yet Melody prevailed in her ability to mentor and lead her team, who served on the front lines of Health and Human Services, to provide compassionate customer service and public health education. And she is known to demonstrate empathy and understanding, and for her steadfast dedication to the community of Del Norte County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors hereby acknowledges the diligence and dedication of Melody Cannon Cuts during her more than 19 years of service for the county. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors expresses its appreciation to Melody and wishes her luck in her retirement and future personal endeavors. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, State of California on this 13th day of December, 2022.
Well, Supervisor Starkey, thank you so much for the kind words today, and, and thank you for the support that the board has shown the Public Health Branch over the years. It's been my privilege to serve Del Norte County and lead a wonderful team with the Public Health Branch. I'd like to thank also, um, Runell and C for the leadership that they've shown to me and my branch, and thank my team especially for all the hard work that they have provided to the county, especially in regards to the pandemic. Thanks for all of the support also shown by other departments like IT and building maintenance. We couldn't done, couldn't have completed any of that work without you. So I'm looking forward to retirement. I'm enjoying it so far and spending time with my family. Congratulations Supervisor Hemmingson on your retirement as well. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Okay, moving on, item number 37. Approve and adopt a resolution to set tax rates for cannabis retail, manufacturing, transactions within the range approved by voters. Measure B for calendar year 2023, as requested by the treasurer tax collector.
The treasurer tax collector couldn't be here, but if you have any questions, I can try to help.
I have one. Go ahead. Is the city's, is the city tax measure still at zero?
Yeah.
And ours is?
Ours has been the maximum that is allowed, it's six and 3%.
Does that make a lot of sense at this point in time?
That's your call.
I know.
One, one thing that I think is worth pointing out is the agreement that we have with Elk Valley Rancheria. This is they can't tax any lower than we do. So if we lower ours, just implicitly, we could be lowering theirs as well, just so you know.
Understood. Thanks for that clarity.
Okay, what's the, we got the pressure of the board?
Oh, a motion to approve that we set the tax rate as is.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no, nothing on the line? No Robert? Okay. No other questions? Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay. Item number 38. Approve and authorize the transfer of all processes associated with the administration of the Animal Services Division of the Office of the Agricultural Commission to the Sheriff's Office as directed by the Board of Supervisors and presented by county administrative officer. And I got to thank, I apologize, I should have done this right off the bat, but Tony Self, who is one of my most favorite people up in administration, is filling in for, I assume that it's Randy Hooper that you're filling in for, because Randy should be filling in for Neil, who has another function that he is needed at. And Mr. Hooper is out of, of the area, out of the country. And so Tony has graciously agreed, or I guess...
Been forced into.
Recruited.
With a twist of an arm to fill in, and we appreciate her service. So Tony, if you want to, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Um, if you have any questions, basically this is just the final process in order to do the transfer from animal services over to the Sheriff's Office, finalizing the ability to sign signature authority budgets, payroll, et cetera.
Now we'll move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion.
Oh, and I'll second that.
And I have a second. And any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board. Any more discussion? Comments?
I'm just excited this is happening. I think this is a great move and it'll be effective January 1st, it sounds like.
I think Garrett's probably jumping up and down.
Yeah, Garrett's super excited too.
Yeah. Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number 32, we're going to introduce an ordinance establishing the chief. I'm sorry?
39.
Thirty, what did I say?
You said 32.
All right. Just my glasses, sorry. Item number 39, introducing ordinance, establishing the chief probation officer as a board of supervisors appointed position, and designate county council to prepare a summary for the publication as requested by county council.
So what we need here is a motion to approve the ordinance?
Yep.
I will make that motion.
And I will second it.
Okay, any public comment?
I think we are at afternoon board. Since Saturday, when I had the first chance to see this, I asked some minds wiser than mine to give some insight into how this process works. This is not unusual for counties by any means. There's several different ways chiefs are appointed around the state, and this is one. Other options are what we have been at, a PJ-appointed chief. And the third option I'm aware of is an MOU between the two parties. So as far as I can tell, really substantially, this does not change a whole lot. The board, for the last nine years I've been chief, has been doing my evaluations. We've been working together budgets and operations and things like that since I was appointed, so I don't have any significant issue with it. The only heartburn that this really causes is I'm disappointed that this is the focus of the board right now, given the issues that we're having with staffing in my department, the struggles we're having with Juvenile Hall. I would rather that have been the focus in finding solutions. Pardon me. Finding solutions to that and making some decisions surrounding that, rather than spending time figuring out who's going to continue to do my evals. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lonnie.
Paul Dillard, Juvenile Justice Commission, I have nothing that's going to be controversy to anybody. I'm pretty much answering, last time we talked, you challenged me with finding some solutions and stuff. I'm going to recap some of that. I'm going to do a succinct, I made, I made packets for all of you, so I don't have to go into it in detail. I'm going to, in the packet is a legal decision, court decision that's been upheld in the second appellate, my Penrod versus the County of San Bernardino, in which they removed an elected sheriff, the board did. You do have significant power. In, in the appellate they dealt with po bar issues, peace officer bill of rights issues, and the appellate upheld all of that. We're not faced with that, but we do have similar type things in that our chief of probation has po bar guarantees. And with that said, I'm going to leave that alone for county council and for you to read because I'm providing it. But the court decision does say you do have a duty and a responsibility to supervise all county management people and hold them responsible to a high standard and ensure there's no malfeasance with the taxpayer's money. The second article in there is basically a San Francisco District Office of the Equal Opportunity Commission, which basically defines harassment and hostile work environments is included in that. And it goes into great detail about a reasonable man and the standard and everything, and I'm not going to bore you with that. But the second section deals with liability. All of you have the liability behind this, and you can be held not only libally, liable in the county, but you can be held personally responsible in federal court. Been there, saw that happen. The, one of the things I found in looking for things that you told me, Buick County does a contract, they do a three-year contract, and I provided that. And they, their chief of probation is contracted, they just did it in, I think it was January last, this year, and it's for three years. But they have excellent statement in there of duties and responsibilities, and they go into appropriate behavior in what, what is the expected of the chief of probation. This, this stuff is going on all, all the, in fact, the terms of, terms of employment, I'm sorry, and establishes accountability on evaluations. Glen County also has a similar with appointment, which you're doing now. Throughout the state, they're talking, they're talking appointment in that they're at-will employees for chiefs. So you're right on target with what you're doing with this current thing.
Thanks, Paul. You need to wrap it up.
Yeah, I'm wrapping it up right now. I'm here because you requested it. The other documents are general information, what the chief of probation is, what the intent, and, and things about the board. But I, we strongly support the contract because that's accountability issue. When you're working behind a contract, you're going to make sure you do the job. So with that, I appreciate your time. I'm going to leave these to all of you.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it.
Hopefully you'll give to your replacement.
Sure.
Go, go in good faith and enjoy your retirement. You're going to find out you're probably more busy with the business than you ever knew. Good luck.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Welcome to board, Dean.
Thank you. Public comment?
Is it afternoon yet? Oh, yes. Good afternoon. I don't really know anything about the probation department or, but from the outside, seems like this is kind of an act of retribution. You know, he was in here a month ago, right, having a recommendation that you guys didn't like, obviously. You don't have many department heads that you don't approve their recommendations, and now, what, you're going to try to put your thumb on him, or, because he made a recommendation? Do you have any response to that?
Any other public comment?
Hi, Norma Williams, chapter president, DNCA SEI U-1021. This is your decision in terms of personnel, this is your matter. I'm not going to get into it. It's not really my bailiwick. The only, and as the chief said, there's a more important issue. Quite frankly, October 25th, at that last board meeting, no one on this board made a decision as to what was going to happen to Juvenile Hall. That is far more important, even as far as the union and the employees over at probation are concerned. Quite frankly, we are disappointed that this issue has not been resolved. However, the union has made a formal meet and confer over the matter with county administration and the department, and we are still at this point waiting to actually schedule a meeting to actually formally meet over the matter. You have to understand that staff over at the hall and at probate, and adult probation have been gone through the wringer. They've been going through a big, huge roller coaster since the end of September, when the chief announced to staff and the union that it was his intention to close the facility, as a 24-hour facility, and then make a recommendation to you to have a, to form a reentry team, which would only be really comprised of five people from Juvenile Hall. Okay, October 11th, nothing happened. October 25th, nothing happened from you. Quite frankly, I can tell you that staff is very frustrated and fed up. The union sees what's happening here as a volleyball game between the board and the probation department, with the staff being the volleyball. And quite frankly, the union is disappointed and staff is fed up. We want to take that volleyball away and have you finally make a decision as to what you're going to do. And I look forward to, again, meeting with county administration and with the chief in order to resolve our issues, our questions, because again, there are issues and questions that the union have and that, quite frankly, the probationary staff more than well deserve to have answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I think this is an appropriate move. There's been many issues arise, and, you know, you only have one person deploying. And when you don't have control over that person, then nothing gets resolved. So I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to say anything bad about Mr. Lehman, Raymond, but the thing is, is when the Borrow Ranch was closed, before it was closed, he was, it was quoted saying that he'd been informing people outside of our community that we were going to close, and so which hindered us getting kids up here for the Borrow Ranch. And then now this deal with the closing the Juvenile Hall. You don't have to look too far to find out what the problem is. Sometimes we just have to face that. And so you guys taking control, you know, maybe we do need a change. So thank you for the new ordinance.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, then I'll bring it back to the board, and I do have a few comments. Anybody else, anything they want to say? You know, I hope this is not viewed as some sort of retribution or anything. It's certainly not on my part at all. And this came at a, I guess, timely or untimely, however you want to, to put it, but, you know, we're asked to do an evaluation on, on Mr. Raymond, and we, we don't have any, any kind of authority, or at least in my mind, we didn't have any kind of authority because he's appointed by the judge. And so the judges should have some input. So they're reluctant to have any input. We're sitting back with our, you know, sitting on our thumbs, wanting to know, how do we evaluate, how do we evaluate this person when, when nobody's given us any input? And this is just a way, in my mind, and I'm a short timer here, and I admit that, but I, I just got to thank Lonnie for all the efforts that he's done in, in putting in his time, you know, filling in for other people at the ungodly hours of his own personal time, what I feel is his own personal time anyway, and to make sure things keep running. And so in no way do I want to have this perceived as, as some sort of penalty or punishment to, to Lonnie, because I think he's, in my opinion, I think he's done a great job and would like to commend him on, on that and, and the way he's tried to keep things going. And, and I don't, and I don't want to, you know, put the blame on him for recruitment. We've got recruitment problems throughout all our departments, and we have had for a lot of times, and we don't put the blame on those department heads on, on, on whether they're able to staff people or not stay. You're getting, you're trying my patience, and I'm going to have you removed if you're going to have outbursts from the public, from the gallery like that. So stop.
Because this action is a direct result of his recommendation.
I want you to stop. Anyway, that's all, that's basically all I wanted to say about this, and I hope you don't, are not taking this as some sort of action by this board, or at least by this board member, that this is any sign that, don't think you're doing an adequate job. So I just wanted to say that. Yeah, go ahead, Dean.
So my other question prior to, to movement in this direction, what discussions have been made with, with the judge as to the change in this operation and a determination as to hiring?
We did have a discussion with, with Judge McAlfrish, and he had no issue with it. We tried to have a discussion with, with Judge Cochran, and were unable to get him to meet with us, so. But he, but was indicated that he didn't have an issue with going this direction also.
Yeah, because I, I know the original status was directly because having that underneath the judge, the judge can, can exert, you know, pressure on probation to make sure that they get their reports on time, that, and they're the direct, I mean, basically, the court is the direct recipient of the product being produced by probation. And, and so there was logic in, in, in the original structure. I mean, I, I greatly appreciate the fact that, you know, hey, we're, you're paying the bills, you, you want to have control over those that are in charge of that, and it makes sense to bring it back under this umbrella. However, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, that discussions had been ongoing or had been done with the judges prior to us moving in this direction.
Yeah, and.
We did actually meet with Judge, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and like I said, was the, the problem that we have is they didn't want to do an evaluation. They didn't want to present us with any kind of evaluation. And so now we're going to have to, now there's going to have to be steps of finding out how we, still, how we do an evaluation, I think. I mean, I think that's going to be an ongoing process. But that information is, is hopefully going to, somehow, we're going to come up with some, I'm not going to, because I'm a short timer.
See ya.
I'm a short timer, but, and I don't mean to keep leaning on that. Joy, he'll be taking over so he can find some way of, of getting to that. Anyway, no other public comment? Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, on to item number 40, approve and adopt an ordinance amending the maximum length of stay at county campgrounds as designate county council and designate county council to prepare a summary of the ordinance, I'll get my glasses fixed or something, ordinance for publication as requested by county council.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion?
In a second.
And a second? Public comment?
Forty.
Forty.
Oh, yeah.
So all I would like to know, Jerry, is, you know, this is great, great idea, but how are we going to keep track? Do we got a computer system that we're going to be keeping track of the names of the people and where they stay, you know, jumping around and stuff, in order to enforce this ordinance? How are we going to keep track of that?
I don't know, but Alan is here.
Oh, Alan.
Sure.
So the answer is yes, we do have a computerized system, which we take in receipts every day. We have a, a person upstairs who puts them into the system every day. We, and we do track them. We track them based upon names, we track them based upon the vehicle license numbers, that's, that's a primary one. And we're in the campgrounds every single day, and we know who's there and we know who's not. The primary reason we have moved from the 14-day stay to the seven-day stay is because we've been noticing that a lot of folks have been basically moving in, and after the seven days, the campgrounds have become very disheveled and actually have looked like homeless camps because some of the people are homeless. And the thought was, is if we were to change it to seven days, that that would at least keep that down to a minimum, and we, we want people coming to our campgrounds from out of the area and stay in here.
Great, appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks for the short answer. Any other public comment? Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number 41, approve and authorize the chair to sign the attached agreement with Queer Humble to create the Del Norte County LGBTQ Resource Project to provide comprehensive database of resources for the LGBTQ community within Del Norte County for the term of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Ronell?
Good afternoon, board. So this item, this contract was originally brought to the board on October 25th. It wasn't approved at that time. Additional information was requested, so I wanted to bring that back for a discussion and be able to provide some of that information to you. So this. of that information to you. So, this contract falls under our Mental Health Service Act's plan, which goes through a stakeholder process that you're all familiar with and approved that plan. This proposal that we received was actually for Delmarque County LGBT Community Resource Page, and by a Mr. Thomas Kellman, who's here with us today, and is going to have an opportunity to share with you as well, to provide those services through a website that is going to be separate from the Queer Humboldt website. Mr. Kellman is not an organization of 501(c)(3), so he needed a fiscal sponsor in order to have the funds processed from the MHSA funding the county to his organization to create this resource, which is really a goal to help reduce mental health stigma for this particular population. And so, you asked about the vetting process. He had submitted some information about his proposal and his background, which I'm going to let him elaborate and share a little bit more on, as well as there were no additional proposals received at that time. We had heard through the stakeholder process and other meetings, such as the local Behavioral Health Board meeting, the need for this type of resource in our community, and so wanted to be able to provide that based on this proposal that was received. So, Mr. Kellman, would you like to come up?
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Nice to meet you all. So, I'm Tom Kellum. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist. Until May, I was working at Open Door in town here. I moved here from Chico about four, a little over four years ago. And I'm part of the LGBTQ community. I know there's a large community here that's kind of unseen in a lot of ways and definitely underserved. Mental health stigma and mental health, even crises, are very pertinent to this community. Very high rates of suicide in the community, especially in younger members of the community. And having a sense of community and having resources available is really important, having that visibility, that people don't see themselves as the only person, especially out here where it's, we're pretty rural and things are isolated anyway. It's easy to feel isolated and not seen, not feeling safe in the community. And so, I know also, having done MHSA projects before in Chico, I had a much bigger contract there under an organization that I was the executive director of. And that one of the important pieces of MHSA is serving underserved communities. And LGBTQ is one of the definitely identified communities that is important. And there's no other services in this county that are directly focused on LGBTQ community. And so I thought it was important to bring that here. I stepped forward to make this proposal. It's a very modest proposal. It's a very non-aggressive proposal. And I wanted to do that to help my community, help this community in general. The, I presented it at the open stakeholder meetings for the MHSA program, and we discussed it. We came up with a plan that seemed reasonable. I presented it, it, you know, was kind of, I guess negotiated a few little things, and came up with a plan that seemed reasonable. A person that, a graduate student from Humboldt State, I mentored them last year in doing their senior social work project, which was initially starting this, in a way. They were putting together resources for this community as part of their graduate project. I oversaw that and thought this would be a great way to extend it into the community. And basically, we're looking at having a website, doing some printed materials, having other social media access, and kind of making that as robust as we can. I don't know if any of you were able to look at the website. I kind of have a preliminary website set up that has some of the information. A lot of it's focused on crisis resources. I don't know if you've got these little packets that I just put out, but inside there, there's a little slip that has crisis resources. That's one of the kind of things that I plan on producing. That one I just made at home, so it's not quite as professional as I'd like it to be when I put it out there in the public. But providing, you know, both crisis resources plus social resources, community resources, information that's really important for people to have so they can be educated. They can make good decisions about their own health, their mental health. And some of that, you know, for youth, it's also geared towards families, their parents, so that, you know, they're not like just struggling alone. Also, I want to educate the parents to be able to participate and understand more what's happening. I reached out to Queer Humboldt, because I'm not a 501(c)(3) and I wasn't about to, for a $15,000 proposal, I wasn't about to start that. You know, and there's very stringent insurance requirements for an MHSA contract that would have probably eaten up most of that budget. But, so I'm able to get that under Queer Humboldt. But they are being the fiscal sponsor. They are not managing the project. They are not, you know, and certainly, they're aware of it, and we discuss things. We're going to have a page on their page that has our resources and a link to our page. But the control and what happens is going to be here. And, you know, I closely work with Cheyenne, attend a lot of the MHSA meetings, the Behavioral Health Board meetings, and, you know, readily available for discussions, comments, you know, ways to improve this, make it better, make it more suited to our particular needs. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from board members?
I just want to point out that this is, we've already approved the MHSA agreement. So, I just really want to make sure that, and caution us, that that's already came before us. So, this program has already been approved by this board. So, I just want to make sure that that, we keep that in mind.
Is there no other 501(c) that could sponsor you in this county to support your project?
I don't know. I know that, I mean, the reason I reached out to Queer Humboldt is because they are part of the LGBTQ community. I was aware of them. And that seemed like a really good fit to me.
I guess, I guess my concern, and maybe you could help explain it then, is their website, which I've gone through a couple times now, they make some statements in there that I don't think are conducive to the advocacy that you're here trying to fulfill for a contract for Delmarque County. One of the pieces that really concerns me is a statement where they pledge to dismantle settler colonialism. What does that mean? Because you're staff of Queer Humboldt, at least according to their website. What is, what does that statement mean?
I don't know exactly what they meant when they established that. And I kind of see that as an over, you know, like a big idea, not necessarily something that's part of everyday action. I am on the, on staff there. I supervise mental health providers that they have. They provide mental health to the community. You know, I think that part of what doesn't get mentioned is what services they do provide that are very necessary and needed. And because they have an ideology that may not fit everybody's picture, doesn't mean that they don't do good work and that they're not dedicated to providing good community service and in an important way for an important community.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's the distinction I'm trying to make.
I can't speak to, you know, like what was in their minds when they developed that, because I wasn't there when they, like, came up with those ideas.
I would like to do nothing more than help fulfill this need in the community and through your resources. I just feel strongly about the 501 that's been selected to help you fulfill that need. Fair enough?
Sure.
Anything else? Derek?
Well, I kind of said my piece at the last time we voted on this. So, I'll just let it rest.
Right. And I don't think there's, I don't think there's, I don't think the board has any issue with the database of resources of being established. I think the attachment to the Queer Humboldt is where the issue lies. And I think, I get, I think with their information that's put out there, I think that's, I think that's the struggle that the board is having. I don't think it's with the resources, you know, to the LGBTQ community. I don't think that's where, I don't think that's where the issue lies, but I think that attachment, as Supervisor Howard was mentioning and Supervisor Short brought up earlier, I think is the concern.
Do you feel that it's important to agree with all of the philosophies of all of the organizations that you provide funding for? You know, I haven't read all of the websites of all of the other organizations that get grants and fundings, so I don't know what they say. And I'm sure that, you know, you might not agree with everything that they say, but you still see that they do really good work and they're important to the community. And, you know, we all have to work together. You know, it's not about, like, oh, I don't like this, the way they're saying this, or I don't like this idea. It's about what gets done. It's about the work and how we need to benefit the community. And if this doesn't happen, then, you know, we're like set back even further in being able to provide these services. And, you know, that's like, you know, I don't like you because you support this candidate, so I'm not going to help this community. You know, I mean, it's like they're a legal entity. They're viable to be able to provide the service they're providing. And just because you don't agree with their opinions or think their opinions might be a little bit more radical than feel acceptable, that's not really, you know, like, part of this. I get that, you know, there's like feelings and emotions about it.
Which is exactly why I ask, is this the only vehicle to provide your service? We, I think this board would love to have you provide this service to our community through a separate 501(c) vehicle. But when they pledge on their website to dismantle the very thing that allows you to exist and allows us to fund your services to this community, I think it really has a little hypocrisy there that I'd like to address and point out. So, there's got to be, because there's a lot of 501(c)s here in this community that can pick up that torch and run with it. And you find one, I'll be more than happy and I'll be the first one to go ahead and put my pledge towards funding this. That's my promise.
And just to address your comments, I mean, we're driven by perception, this board, for the most part. We try to do the work, but that's not always what, the perception that gets back to us. So, I think it has a lot to do with our job also. So, with that, I'm going to ask for any public comment. Thank you.
Don't a lot of the, Sam Stray, Delmarque County, don't a lot of the services that he's asking to provide already exist in the county?
Well, the services do, but the resources to those, to where they're, I think that's a database to get these resources all together so that they
It's not, it's not something the county can provide. The staff, they have to contract outside agencies for a lot of this, I mean, basic resource management? Or is it just because you have money to, money available to provide for an out-of-county or, you know, another contractor to come in and provide the services? I mean, what I'm seeing in a lot of respects in this county is that you not only have, what, you know, over 2,000 employees in the county, but you also contract out for, you know, a huge number of other services that are provided by other people that are temporarily employed by the county. What, you know, where does, where does the county actually have the responsibility to do some of this work rather than contracting it out? Surely, the $15,000 that you're talking about can be used within the county to employ, you know, a person to do that work rather than contract it out. It's not rocket science to supply a database. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment?
The more you intend to bring us together, the more you divide us. Those are the consequences. You're dividing us. Queer Humboldt. Queer Humboldt. Is that, is that appropriate? I'm not really sure. There's a gray line there, isn't there? Queer Humboldt, is queer a characteristic? Anyone? Is queer a characteristic? Good. Am I unclear in my question?
You're unclear in your comment.
Okay, how about this? Have you read your anti-harassment policy for the county?
It's the name of the organization.
It's directing resources toward something that government shouldn't really get involved in. Why are we talking? I mean, an employer can't talk about this with his employee. It's not good. And then, yeah, I mean, the Antifa correlation and all that. The contract is six months old already, of course. Started July 1 of 2022. That's why it's back on the board, right? You guys rejected the same exact contract. County Council said it's the exact same contract. You didn't approve it. Now it's back again. Why? I don't know. You can read this anti-harassment policy when you get a chance. Well, short timer. Don't worry about it. This policy specifically prohibits harassment in any aspect of county employment based on any characteristic. And yet, so, it is, it's a slippery slope. We, everyone, we're all people. We all deal with life. It's just life. We all have problems. People need to work it out themselves. You don't need to feel like you need to be accountable for everybody. If you want to take responsibility for everybody, then you're going to be accountable for them. Do not approve this.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm not going to speak as a county employee. I'm not going to speak as a union member, a union leader. I'm only going to speak to you as a mother, a proud, very proud mother of a member of the LGBTQ community. However you resolve, this is up to you, okay? Whether it be this individual who finds another, either goes through Queer Humboldt or finds another 501(c), or whether the department itself decides to find the means in which to supply this information to this community. But this is a community, a hidden community, a community that does not feel that it is a part of Delmarque County. My son left Delmarque County, not only because of employment opportunities, but also because of the fact, the strong fact, that he did not feel a part of this community because he is a gay man. He did not feel that he was accepted here. He did not feel not feel that he was accepted here. He did not feel that this community offered any resources for him. And as a mother of this young man, I have to agree. When he came out, he was a young, he was a teenager. He was in crisis. And I had to deal with that crisis. And I did not feel that there was anyone that I could go to or anyone that he could go to. As a proud mother of a young gay man, I know what that's like, to feel even here in this community, where I work, who I serve, that I still did not feel that I could avail myself of anyone here, that there was no resources for myself or for my son. Now, I know people may not like this, but quite frankly, I don't give a damn. Because as a mother, my son comes first. Because I see my boy, not his sexual orientation, but my boy. And if there's anything that this community, that this department can offer, this segment, this important segment of our community, then it is our duty and our obligation to provide it. Otherwise, quite frankly, then you're all hypocrites. And you shouldn't be serving. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm a grandmother of a gay man, a young man. And he lives in Sacramento and he has all those services. But it doesn't help because, you know, everybody has their own demons to deal with. So the way I, from my perspective, what, what good is it going to do? To me, it's a scam. It's a scam because we already have services here. And even when you have services, it doesn't mean that it's going to help. So I, I disapprove of it personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I have a hand raised online as well. Go ahead.
I just want to comment to the aspect of services geared at the LGBTQ population. And of course, for behavioral health, we provide services to anybody who is eligible for services. Particularly, this item exists in our prevention and early intervention part of our plan, which is targeting stigma reduction and suicide reduction. And those are its goals. It's not to provide direct care and services in that prevention and early intervention program. And I would like to point out that, you know, some of the things leading up to this was those public stakeholder comments and such that we received. But also, we have a significant impact locally with children with suicide attempts because of varying things related to the LGBTQ population, issues that they deal with. And, you know, that should be recognized, I think, in this, is that this is to help reduce those things. And, you know, I just feel like, time and time again, we've heard the importance from the community about it, and I hope that the board would really support this and understand that, you know, it's a one-year project. We've already missed six months of the project because of delays. And I hope that we can, you know, spend the next six months developing the resources. We'll, we'll begin having new stakeholder meetings in January and February. And we can talk about this further to continue it or not continue it in the next MHSA plan, but I would really like to see that we do something today. So thank you.
Kylie, you had somebody online?
Yeah, give me one moment. Melissa, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Melissa. This is Melissa's computer. This is Robert. I just wanted to speak up. I thought maybe the other, one of the other commenters, you know, spoke kind of eloquently really of maybe what the board really feels well to say, you know, which is what I'm always fearing is Delmore is damn well going to prove itself a bigoted county. You know, I don't even, I'm not even really sure about the Queer Humboldt colonialism. Is that what they say? Colonialism is the objection? I thought that was the word I heard. I've been working between listening. But, you know, I don't think we all have to get on board with that. But we did. We had a, you know, we had a slave plantation in our county. It was called Reservation Ranch. You know, so there's, there's issues that some of us want to deal with, you know. And a lot, my son was at the, at a thrift store the other day and he says, you know, kind of got into a couple of older folks. They're a little racist, you know. He heard the N-word and things like that. We have that up here a lot. And, and the people said, well, slavery is just part of our culture. Well, if that's the case, you know, this is part of our, our culture now too. The things you guys do. This should have been on the consent agenda, you know? This is, like, three times, three times as high. I just Googled it. I figure we could use the information, right? Did you guys Google that? Three times as high the suicide rates for this one group. And from what I understand, it's, it's going to be grant money, you know, 70 cents of every dollar for our general fund goes to law enforcement. It's almost a bad charity at this point. So we don't have money for anything real anymore. So you're going to have to go to new people and be more open-minded to help us help ourselves, I think. I think. I'm really up on this. But I was, I just, you know, it's, the county shouldn't be an embarrassment to decent people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I don't have any more online.
Okay. And so no public comment.
So I, I'm, I'm just going to say again, I reiterate that some of what the program manager Hogan stated was that this was all from stakeholder input. This is from the community. The community showed up and decided that we needed these services in Delnor County. And, and we've heard today, and it's very true, that the suicide rate amongst this population is so much higher. So I am supportive of having services here, a community here to support these individuals. I think the hang-up here, and I think all of us agree we want those services. The hang-up here is we just don't like the, or the board, I don't say we, but the venue in which it's going to be distributed. It's not going to change what the Delnor County LGBTQ Resource Project is. It's just being filtered through one particular place. So, and I, and I'm probably making a huge mistake here because I don't know that I'll get a second. But I'm going to make a motion that we approve and authorize the chair to sign the attached agreement with Queer Humboldt to create the Delnor County LGBTQ Resource Project.
And I'm looking for a second. And seeing no second, it dies as a result of no second. So, moving on. We're going to item number 42, which is to discuss and direct staff to update the Delnor County Administrative Manual to reflect the consistency with the Rosenberg Rules of Order as requested by County Administrative Officer Tony. Oh, you got real opportunity here, Tony. Hand out raises, POs, all kinds of stuff.
So this came up because of the last item. And it has been said around here for a long time that we follow Rosenberg's rules. We couldn't find any evidence that we've ever adopted anything, had a policy, had a resolution, anything like that. We do have a lot of procedures in the admin manual, but they're not all of the things that are in Rosenberg's rules. The attachment here is a short little thing. I think it's eight pages or 10 pages. It's from the League of Cities. It has the rules with little explanations. It's a pretty good overview. There's a few things in there that are a little different from what we do, like a motion to take a recess instead of just the chair calling it, or a motion to adjourn instead of just, we're done with our business, so we're done. Those things probably aren't very important, but there is a motion to reconsider and a motion to suspend the rules that I think the issue has come up before. And it looks like we kind of grafted these principles into what we did, but we didn't really adopt them. So if this is something the board's interested in, we could adjust the admin manual to reflect, I would say, at least those two important motions and anything else the board wants in there.
Yeah, I think we can direct staff to look into that and bring us back some of those issues. Are there any specific-
Would you suggest just those couple of items? Or would it be easier just to adopt Rosenberg's rules as our guiding document?
The easiest thing to do would be to just adopt them wholesale. And say in the admin manual, take everything else out and say, we follow Rosenberg's rules. If the board wants to go that far. If the board wants to keep everything we have except add a few things, we could do that too. It's, it's, it's up to you guys.
Didn't we just update the admin rules? And I, I think we want to stick with that. I don't want to see that change after we've already gone through that whole process. But if there are a few things and anybody, anything that the board wants to give Joel to, to look into, I don't have an issue with. But I don't want to just throw away what we've already created and then just adopt one set of rules. Because I think we've made those rules to adapt to the way we do business. That's just my view. Eric?
Well, and if I could, is that, we did. We worked hard on the admin rules. But what I'd like to see is, is this incorporated into that. I, I would like consistency, right? So if we could just have the whole Rosenberg Rules of Order as it, but not do away with what we did. So maybe bring it back for us to see what it would change if we were to just adopt the Rosenberg rules.
Okay. All right. That's, that's clear direction for me. If that's everybody's will.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're going to move on to this discussion item, which is the proposed staffing changes with the Department of Health and Human Services. Renell?
Good afternoon again. So, back in August, the Assistant Director and I presented to you the strategic plan, final report, which addressed some suggestions for some organizational structure changes. Following that, in October, we presented some suggested positions to add to that structure in order to address the gaps in leadership that we identified, as well as what we saw in surveying other counties through that strategic plan process. And the really helping to define the roles of the director, the assistant director, the missing level, which would be the deputy director level and the program managers, so that our program managers can really focus on the programs and it could assist with some of the impacts of the staffing ratios. Currently, our average staffing ratios for staff to supervisor level is about 4.59 FTEs. Our average ratio from supervisors to managers is 4.11 FTEs. And then currently, our average ratio of managers to the assistant director is 14 FTEs. So we see right there that we need to make some changes in what that looks like. So in October, I provided you what our current structure looks like. I think those attachments are also included in this item. And then what our ideal structure looks like. I propose four deputy directors to start the conversation so that we can have some discussion and suggestions of what that could look like to meet the needs of the department. So I'm here again today so that we can continue that discussion.
Great. Thanks. Supervisors?
What I would like to see before we go any further with this is budgetary. I'd like it to be broke down. So as of now, when I see this future state of what you're requesting, in the board report at least, is the salary ranges and that sort of thing. I would like to know how this is actually going to impact us. I think, in my opinion, in looking at this, and we were supposed to meet, and I did meet with you, and I do apologize for that, it's feeling very top-heavy to me. So one of the things that I want to look at is, number one, the cost. That's always going to be our bottom line for a lot of things. But is there any other structure that we could maybe look at that perhaps could accomplish what you're wanting to accomplish with not adding so much layer? So that, that would be my only input at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
No, I, I actually agree with Supervisor Starkey's comments. And I absolutely would hope that you could dive into those pieces as she suggested.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
No, I think we, we discussed, you know, some, some ideas. And I think those are the ones that we'd like to see alternatives that, that may help. And as well as the, the wage range, which is going to be problematic the way it stands right now, how to adjust it in order to make it much more palatable and, and provide upward growth. Because you hire and deploy, you, you want to make sure that they have an incentive to continue to perform at a higher level. And also that it, that it doesn't affect other departments and agencies within our county.
Supervisor Short?
Yeah, it's for me, as we discussed, you know, it's kind of like the incident command system. If you're heavy here, you just put another supervisor on top of those, those places. That's kind of what I'd like to have illustrated out is where you've got these problem areas. You mentioned earlier that you had 14 people under one supervisor, that they were all, all answering to that one person. Obviously, you know, span of control should be five to seven. So we've got issues there. So I'd, I'd like to see that a little better spelled out for us. Thank you.
Yeah. And if I could just, the, the thing that I remember that came out of that, the group that did that strategic plan was the deficiencies that were happening was communication. And if this is a way to fix some of that communication issues, then, you know, then I could be supportive of part of it. I have to agree with, with all of what the supervisors have said, in that we need more of a phased-in approach rather than just jumping in with both feet and saying, this is what we need and this is what it's going to cost. Because I think, I think all of those things need to be looked at strategically, even though this is a strategic plan. But I think the communication was the big thing. And I can see where communication could be an issue when there's so many people reporting to just one person. And, and that loss in communication as it filters from person to person to person, we lose a lot in that. So that's, that's all I've got to say. Hopefully, come back with something that we can all be jumping up and down about.
Yeah, definitely. I appreciate the feedback and the opportunity to discuss it further. I mean, we do have some budgetary numbers, as you're all familiar with. DHHS does not generally have a general fund impact in most of our programs and staffing positions. And so these would not be funded out of general fund. They would be funding out of the various programs. So I can, you know, definitely come back with some real specifics on that. And any other information you'd like to see, just let me know.
Great. Thank you, Renell. Appreciate it. Okay. We're going to move, go back to our brief reports, which we skipped over because we had a bunch of presentations that needed to be done.
Chair.
This morning, yes. Do I have something else?
We do have item number 50 under legislative and budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, missed a page. Thank you, Kylie. You're the best. You are-
Did you hear that, Tony?
I don't know if you want to say that to, I don't know if you want to say that to the acting CAO at this point. All right. Item number 50, approve the use of fiscal year 2022, 2023 budgeted capital improvement funds in the amount of $28,000 to address the estimated costs associated with the second phase of the relocation of agricultural weights and measures department as requested by the County Administrative- Live to approve, Mr. Chairman, in a second. I have a motion and a second public comment. Seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board. Kylie, would you please pull a vote?
Chair, I have one hand raised online, but it's been raised for a while. It's Robert. Let me see if he wants to comment on this item. Robert, are you there?
Maybe say Melissa.
Melissa, are you there?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to have my hand up.
Okay. Thank you.
See, I knew he would come, come forward. Okay. Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair, I did get a question about public comment for the DHHS staffing item.
Oh, okay. Any public comment on the DHHS? That was just a discussion item. There was no action.
Okay. I just got a question about it, so.
But I will take public comment. That's fine.
Norma Williams, chapter president again, DNC ACIU 1021. I know that this is going to be continued discussion on this particular item. However, the union did make a request already on the costs for the four directors. We definitely have those numbers, either at a Step A or at a Step C, which historically, you've all been recently hiring new employees at as opposed to a Step A. The only issue, and again, the union has already submitted a formal meeting and confer, or actually, meet and discuss request on the DHSS, DHHS compensation analysis, as well as the final compensation analysis per contract 4.4 of our contract. We already did submit that, that meet and discuss per the contract. We already did submit that meet and discuss per the contract. We have yet to hear back from the county on when that will be scheduled. Now, mind you, when we're looking at this particular item and what the Director is requesting, I could understand her reasoning for wanting to make the department more cost, you know, run more efficiently. However, when you take a look at the DHHS compensation analysis study, you're asking for four deputy directors. And again, I already know what that cost is. But you're asking to hire another level of management when you have 22%, 22 classifications within your department that are earning 10% or more below market. Now, I think that's something that you need to review and look at, especially for the new board members. I strongly suggest that you take a look at those compensation analysis and probably come up with the same questions. Because like I said, this is going to be part of our discussion with the county. But this is something that I do want to point out. Four deputy directors that you either at a range 66, which you hire, when you either hire them at an A or a C, that's a significant cost, fully funded or not. But you have to weigh in and take into account what the compensation report said. 22 classifications making under 10% or more, which, when I took a look at that, ranges from 11% to 27% below market, the majority of whom we represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have one hand raised on the line, Chair.
Okay.
Robert, you still have your hand up? Is this for this item?
I don't know what's going on. I'm sorry.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, let you know, you weren't being ignored.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I go on to something different, Kylie?
I'm sorry, Chair.
Can I go on to something different now?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Simon says. Okay. We're going to receive brief reports from supervisors on what they've been doing over the last, actually, four weeks or month or whatever, because we didn't have a meeting at the end of November. And I'm going to start off with our new supervisor, Wilson. He'll only be able to report after he was sworn in, so it's probably going to be short. I don't know that, but I'm sure.
Very short, yeah.
I think he's been.
I'm just very grateful to be here. You know, I thank God that he's blessed me, that I can be here to represent the people in District Five. I, this is my first meeting. It was daunting to go through the 800 pages, but we did it. And I just want to say, you know, as we go forward, I look towards the public for guidance. I look towards the board members for guidance, and I appreciate just the opportunity to serve. I had such a joy when I was sheriff, and it was a privilege and it was a pleasure to be able to serve the community and to try to improve things and to provide the best service that we could. This is a much greater scope, but it also takes three, three members or more to move the county in the right direction. And I just am very thankful and grateful, not only to my family, to all the people that supported me, to my God, for really giving me the opportunity to be here. And I want to thank you all. Thanks so much.
Thanks. Supervisor Starkey?
Okay. This is going to be speed round because we are all tired. If anybody wants further clarification of what I did, please reach out to me. But I attended the High Status Steam River Trail opening. I attended a visitor bureau meeting. I went to the CSAC conference in Anaheim, and that was fantastic. I completed an ethics training, so I'm good for two more years. I attended a chamber board meeting. I hosted a town hall meeting with Supervisor Short, which was wonderful. I attended a county-city two-by-two regarding Preston Island. I participated in Prop 64 grant discussion, which is really great news. I attended the local behavioral health board. I attended the Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting, the regular meeting, as well as the special meeting. I participated in the homeless encampment meeting. I attended a Care Court webinar. That's going to be huge, huge changes for our community. Participated in a reaching rural team meeting. Oh, my gosh, this is going to be amazing, as well as I attended several city council meetings, and this is my gift to you, Supervisor Hemmingson. I made that in under 30 seconds.
You know, it makes me want to stay on for another year, just to see that you can actually have a brief report. Vice Chair Short?
I am, I am not going to belabor this either. Went to city council meetings, RCTA, some of the meetings that Valerie mentioned, the homeless, our town hall was great. But I'm just going to let it go for there because it's 1:30 in the afternoon.
This is my retirement present, I guess. Supervisor Howard?
Staying in line. Yeah, also attended the California State Association Counties Annual Meeting. Had a great pleasure of chairing the largest discussion at the annual meeting, which was specifically around water in the state of California. Lots more to come in that area. Also had a lot of discussion with David Sebasian, who is the Director of Conservation for the state of California on that specific issue, discussions around Camp Park, also discussions with Catherine Freeman, who's a lobbyist with the California State Association Counties on water, discussions with Mike McGuire, attended the Mung New Year event. And in addition, fielded a lot of calls around tree falling, the, around Highway 199. And then also attended the North Deal meeting for Supervisor Hemmingson while he was at RCRC last week. In addition, had my first visit to Pelican Bay State Prison, addressed some issues specific to the announcement around the seawing closures and then what's taking place there. And then also presented to inmates that are participating in a fundraiser specific to painting artwork on guitars and told them the story of Komomi, which will be the theme of one of the guitars. At the invitation of the Council General Japan of San Francisco, I attended an event on Friday in San Francisco, reception for the sister cities. And then last, but not least, had a strong and long conversation with Laura Arroyo, who's part of the state's OSPD office. And as you're aware, we're having a lot more discussion around the Public Defender's Office here in the county going forward. So listened to a lot of what she had to say, and she listened to what I had to say. That's my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I'm not sure mine's going to be so brief, but I will try to make it so. As we had the presentation from the Point St. George project, the trail and parking lot project, I had quite a few meetings with the CDD staff, Fish and Wildlife, State Parks, Coastal Conservancy, along those lines. Also had a meeting with Ron Sandler from Delmar Ambulance. As Supervisor Starkey mentioned, the Hayuchi Trail dedication, I was out there for that. I met with Chief Probation Officer Lonnie Raymond, had some discussions, tri-agency meeting, enjoyed the Veterans Day Parade, had a whale working group preseason assessment. Went to the CSAC, as was mentioned by the other supervisors, had the CSAC conference. And the Agricultural Environment and Natural Resources Committee has been taken to a different level. And I have to put a lot of this on Supervisor Howard. It's not just the issues that are up, that we have a lot of really important issues, water issues being one of those, but, you know, forest issues, all those kind of things. Supervisor Howard has brought that up to a level where when we used to go to the AENR meeting, there would be a handful of people that would show up. And now they're standing room only, people are out the door. So I have to, I have to give him a lot of kudos on bringing that up to the level that I think it should be. I also co-chair, did, I also at one time co-chaired the Coastal Counties meeting, which is one of the meetings within CSAC. And we're, most of us were relieved of that. There was three of us co-chairs, and now I think Luis Alejo is the only one left as chairman of that. But that was a good one, was nice to be on. I also went to the Housing and Land Use Transportation meeting. You know, there's a lot, always a lot of featured speakers that do an excellent job. Attended the Rural Caucus. Enyo County's Supervisor Jeff Griffiths will be representing rural counties as the second vice chair at CSAC. So he's got kind of a dynamic personality, so that will be interesting to see how that goes. I did attend the town hall meeting that Supervisor Starkey and Supervisor Short put on. At the RCRC meeting this year, we started an hour early to get a presentation from Jerry Brown, not the Jerry Brown, our governor, ex-governor Jerry Brown, but Jerry Brown, who was the coordinator of this sites reservoir project. And the sites reservoir was, started discussions about 60 years ago in getting this sites reservoir established. And to this date, we are still in that process of discussing. If that project had been put in place even 40 years ago, we would have, I think, ample water to take care of the issues that we're having now with drought. So it's fortunate that we had this, that we're having this discussion, discussion, and it is moving forward. It's a $4 billion project and two earthen dams, mostly in Colusa County, but I think part of Glen County also. Anyway, and RCRC has grown with all the affiliates, has grown from being a fairly, I shouldn't say small, because it's always been a substantial packet, but now it's probably four times, the packet's probably four times as big as it was when I started. Of course, we have more counties now. I think there was 35 counties when I first started on RCRC, and now there's 40. So we're growing in that direction also. But in these meetings now, and we're trying to pack these all into one day, we have the RCRC meeting, the GSFA meeting, and the Golden State Connect Authority meeting, all in one day. And it pushes it out to where travel, at least for me, is getting, was getting to be. I'm a short timer now, let me remind you, that I don't have to do that anymore. But it is, it is kind of taxing when your meeting doesn't get done till 3:30 and you got a seven or eight-hour drive ahead of you to get back home. But, you know, as you saw from the presentation this morning from Patrick Blacklock, he is just absolute, what an addition. We hired him, and with COVID, I can't even tell you how many years ago it's been, two, three years ago. And it's really stepped into that position and is raising the bar, is continually raising the bar with that group. So hopefully, departments and department heads will use that resource to help them get to the, get to where they need to be because their staff is just incredible. Anyway, moving along, had an NCRP meeting, which we approved the second round of the Prop 1 funding and approved five, out of the $8 million that was available to all the other projects, we, locally, we approved $500,000 for the city of Crescent City for the area regional water supply augmentation. So I won't go into that any further. I also had a meeting with Grant Werschko. And since this is my last regularly scheduled meeting, I'm going to take the opportunity to say a few nice things. I'm not going to say any bad things about anybody. And I'm going to say some especially nice things about one in particular person. But this has been a great ride. None of us do this individually. Anything we do that we want to take credit for should not be taken credit for by just one single person. It's a board, it's board action. Everything we, everything we do comes from majority of the board, and most of the time that's a 5-0 vote. It's not very often is it less than that. It does happen occasionally on some of those issues. But we have such a great staff, and I can't emphasize that enough, the commitments and the dedication of staff that they have to their jobs. It's, yeah, I'm hopefully, you know, I always try to help making, make things better, and usually I end up just making things less worse. So I have to take that with me. But the staff that we have, and I know that I'm going to leave some people out, but our community development director, Heidi Kuntz, is just a rock star. And I can't say enough about her. Alan Winogradoff, just super, the staff that we've had in the past in administration. I see Jay Serena sitting out there in the audience. He was a rock star, in my opinion. Janine Galioto was here earlier. She was the CAO when I started. And now Neil Lopez has taken over from being Assistant CAO to CAO and doing a phenomenal job, as well as Randy Hooper stepping away from the Airport Authority, which he did an absolutely fantastic job there, and he's doing a great job in administration. Renell Brown, who is, you know, just getting started at her position, but I think the future looks bright for her and that department. You know, I can't say, she's taken on quite a role, and I think we're going to see great things out of her. So I appreciate everything that she's done. Joel Campbell Blair, he's, he's always keeping us in line. I've always had what I hopefully is a good relationship with him. I like him. I think he'll, he'll continue to do good things for the county. So, you know, that's good. Our, our elected officials, you know, they have done a really superb job. We're very fortunate to have the people that we have. Clint Shad in the Auditor Controller, he does a great job. Barbara in Treasury Tax Collector, our Auditor's Office. I mean, you know, I just can't say enough good things about all the people that we have. Toni steps into any job you push her into or, you know, lead her in the right direction. And she is, she is always, to me, she always seems to be in a good mood and always working very hard. So I really appreciate that. Ronnie Lehman, or Lonnie, excuse me, Lonnie Raymond, in, in Chief Probation Officer. He's, I think, he's been there for nine years, you know, and I think he's done a good job. I think he's, more than a good job, I shouldn't just say a good job, but I think he's, at least for me, I've always appreciated everything he's done. He's kept us informed. He's put us, you know, let us know what the direction of things going. And to be honest with you, from the very first time I was a supervisor, all the issues that he really had to deal with were known at the time I became a supervisor. That was 16 years ago. And so all those issues that are coming now that he's having to deal with and having to take credit for, or, or the, you know, not the good side of credit, but everything he's had to get thrown at him were issues that we knew about 16 years ago, that we knew that this was the direction, kind of the direction that things were going. Not as, not as bad. It wasn't, but they all, all kind of came to a head. And I know there's probably people that I'm leaving out. That's why I hate to, Mr. Thompson back there in, from community, from the building department, he's been around here for a long while and does a great job too. So I can't say enough about that. Dan back there at IT, there's somebody that is kind of an unsung hero. And Rachel also, they're, you know, they're kind of unsung heroes. They're what makes all this happen, what, everything that gets out to the public and everything that we do is because of Dan and the efforts that he puts in. He put together, we have a drone, and he put together an aerial view of the Pacific shores on some of the issues that we had out there. What a fantastic job that was. What a, what a great tool that is to have, and we look forward to seeing more of that down, or these guys do, I'm sure. And then probably my most favorite person, and I hate to say this in front of other people. people, but to see Kylie's smiling face coming up the stairs and going into the office, and, you know, she kind of keeps me in check on the agenda, as you can see, she doesn't hesitate to tell me that I forgot something, or that, hey, what about this, or did you get public comment on that? So, she's kind of what keeps me going, and, and I'm going to miss her a lot, as well as everybody else, so. Appreciate the ride, thanks a lot, and since we don't have Rosenberg rule yet, I'm going to say this meeting's adjourned.
Chair?
Yes?
Will you have one more thing?
Okay. Spit it out, Kylie.
Hi, I'm Jared Hemmingson. Check in with the board supervisors, stuff like that.